Just right up to that line, huh? All set?
Yes.
Great. All right, we'll get regular city council meeting called order if we could start with roll call. Wendy?
Wendy Henley.
Gavin Massengo.
Sarah Hudson.
Charlie Zach.
Amber Lewis.
Mike Dyson. We'll open up public comments, so citizens wishing to address city council for items on the agenda take it at this time, we're going to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone signed up? Anyone in the audience just really eager to address us for not the agenda items? Great, we'll move on then. So, public comments were taken at 7:01 and we're moving on to public hearings at 7:01. We'll open up item two, public hearing on an ordinance amending the city's code of ordinances, section 12.06, to prohibit the operation of motor assisted scooters in the city, providing for a penalty up to 500 per day for violation of this ordinance, providing for severability in an effective date. Have anyone signed up? No one signed up for this public hearing. Anyone? No one. Close the public hearing at 7:01. And we will open up a public hearing at 7:01 to discuss and take possible action on approval of a final plat application for the purpose of obtaining a building permit at 2514 Rollingwood Drive. Do we have anyone? No one? No one. We will close the public hearing at 7:02. It does say we can take possible action. Are we inclined to take action?
Right.
Council? Go ahead, Amber.
The applicant is not here. The planning and zoning recommended final approval if they amended the plat to reflect the right of way, which they did, they put a 10-foot right of way on there to reflect the easement. There's a 10-foot PUE now indicated on the plat. And also you can see the front, side, and rear yard setbacks also indicated on the plat.
And I understand also that there was a need, or at least a request from P&amp;Z to make sure that the easement appeared of public record. Did they verify? A filing for that?
I'm not exactly sure what they mean by easement to be public record, but it's indicated on the plat and it will be filed.
So that's a public record?
So...
Okay. So, based on that, does this plat meet with P&amp;Z's recommendations?
I... yes, it does. I move to approve the final plat for 2514 Rollingwood Drive.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Council, do we have discussion?
I listened to the P&amp;Z meeting on that. Then we had this preliminary plat, looks like everything is on this that was supposed to be. And it's bringing those two properties together into one platted lot. Is that correct? Okay. As long as everything is submitted correctly, I don't have any problems with it.
Great. Any other discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the final plat application is approved. We will move on to item four, presentations and interviews of the firms in responses submitted to the city's request for proposals for wastewater rate consultants. Sure will. To perform a wastewater rate study. Also, let the record reflect that council member Shapiro has joined us on the dice.
The keyboard?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Good evening, honorable mayor, distinguished council members. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Nalisa Hedin, I'm with Nalisa Hedin Consulting. And this evening I'd like to walk through some of the details of the proposal I presented to the city of Rollingwood for the performance of a cost of service and rate design study for the city's wastewater utility. This evening I'll talk a little bit about myself and about my firm, but I'd like to focus most of our time this evening on my approach to your project. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. There's lots of details in the proposal I gave you, I'm just going to try to give you the 50,000-foot view. As far as my company goes, Nalisa Hedin Consulting was formed in 2014 as a management consulting firm with a specialty in working with water utilities, mainly municipal water utilities. I do a lot, mostly financial consulting, with a focus on cost of service and rate design studies. It's a very detailed and niche market, if you will. Nobody goes to college for this, you end up into it and then you can't get out. That being said, myself personally, I am the president of the company and I will serve as a project manager, and by that I mean I will do 99.9% of the work myself, including working directly with your staff, your city council, and your utility commission. I have an MBA with a concentration in finance. I have been working in this industry for 20 years, working on cost of service and rate design studies. I've worked all over the state of Texas, working in New Mexico, Louisiana, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Arizona. I have served as a past chair of the Texas American Water Works Association's Rates and Charges Subcommittee. We work on educating and providing information to municipal utilities throughout the state on rate issues. We also work on some policy directions and best management practices, et cetera. I am an expert in water and wastewater utility cost of service and rate design. I have been invited to testify before the Texas State Legislature on utility rate issues. I've been called by Senator Watson in helping him and his staff understand rate issues, et cetera. I've also testified as an expert witness in cost of service and rate design issues before the State Office of Administrative Hearings, which is a hearing branch that hears any contested rate case proceedings before the PUC. Focusing now on my approach to your project. First, I'd like to give you an overview of what that would look like. Essentially, this would be a very collaborative process. I do not, I prefer not to grab your data, run away, and come back in two months and say, "Here you go." Instead, I want to use and receive your input and feedback. It's important to me that I don't just give you a report and walk away. And my biggest fear is if that report you put on a shelf and never use, it's not something that you can implement and doesn't meet your goals, then I haven't done my job. So instead, I prefer to work very closely with you and collaboratively. That can take several different forms. As we begin this process, I'll issue a request for information to your staff, asking them for data and all the background information that I need. Then, as we proceed, it's really a customized solution to what you all need. We can work directly with your staff, come to you with some recommendations at the end, or we can work side by side, giving you some status reports, doing some work sessions to receive your feedback and information. Again, it's important to me that we achieve your goals. And to achieve your goals, I need to know what they are. That being said, a cost of service and rate design study generally takes four steps to complete with lots of details in between. The first step is to develop what we call revenue requirements. Revenue requirements are essentially defined as the revenue you need to recover every year to achieve your goals and to do what you've got to do. In developing revenue requirements, that's where that collaborative process comes into play. I'll start off by looking at and analyzing your historical financial information and your budget, but then we'll need your feedback and input. We'll look at everything from growth to inflation. We'll also look at a capital improvement plan. How do we fund that? We'll look at your reserve funds. We'll talk through and develop a comprehensive five-year horizon typically. I usually use five years because I find that that gives you enough lead time to plan and prepare to allow your community to know what's coming. Beyond five years, sometimes that crystal ball's pretty fuzzy. That said, if we have a large capital project in year six, or year seven, or we have debt being retired, anything like that, we'll go out and look at a longer period of time. Again, just making sure we give you the information and look at a reasonable period for your needs. Revenue requirements typically for a municipal utility are developed based off of what we call a cash needs approach. Cash needs means we look at your operations and maintenance expenses. We look at your annual debt service, reserve requirements, any cash capital outlay. We don't look at depreciation expense usually, nor do we look at any sort of profit or return on investment. There may be some exceptions to that, and again, we'll address those issues and how that might look as we proceed. After we've developed our revenue requirements, and again, looking at a five-year horizon, we go to the next step, which is this bizarre word called functionalization. If you type it into your computer, you'll have a nice little red squiggly line underneath because dictionaries don't think it's a word and rate consultants all think it is. So, let me give you a little background on what that is. In the context of a wastewater utility, we have to address two things. The first thing when we're building the utility and then operating the utility is we have to address the flows, the volume of sewage coming through the system. We have to size everything appropriately and that has a direct impact on our costs. We also, though, have to address the strength of the sewage. The stronger it is and the different components, and there's several different components of sewage that we look at, influence how much it costs to treat that. So we look at your cost structure and understand what those components are. We break our costs into flow-related costs as well as strength-related costs. Then we start looking at our customers, which is step three. In this process, we look at historical data. We make projections of future customer count, of consumption on the system, and in this sense wastewater flows. We look at it typically by customer classes and we make projections to going forward. We also look at our customers and identify how much they're using and their burdens on the system. What we typically find is customers, different or more specifically classes of customers, put different burdens on the utility system. On the residential side, we typically have not as strong sewage. Typically, we have some human waste and some food prep, but that's about it. And we have a lot of dilution. We have toilets flushing and showers and laundry, lots of dilution. On the commercial side, especially when we start looking at residential, or excuse me, restaurants, we end up with stronger, harder to treat sewage, and less dilution. And so we'll look at that and we look at how your customers have actually used and what their historical use on the system is. Flow-related costs are allocated to customer classes based off of their prorata share of the flows in the system. And strength-related costs are based off of their prorata share of the strength loading in the system. Those first three steps are largely scientific in nature. It's spreadsheets and math. The last step, though, we start getting into the art and the policy issues, which is getting into rate design. We'll work with you to understand what those policy issues we need to address. We need to understand whether or not we're looking at the same base bill for everybody. Doesn't matter how much you use, or are we going to have a two-component bill, having a base charge and a volumetric charge? Are we looking at and wanting to have different rates for residential versus commercial customers? Or is it the goal of the city to have just one universal rate? We'll work with you to understand that and develop rates that work towards achieving your policy decision, directions. Beyond those four steps, I apologize. Beyond those four steps, I do want to, again, make sure that you understand that my goal is to make sure you achieve your goals and that we give you a planning document that you can take going forward. Within that, you'll notice I emphasize in my proposal that I do not limit the number of meetings with the city. That's meetings with city staff, with your utility commission, with your city council. You may have a committee, a subcommittee, or of some sorts. I'm not going to limit those meetings. It's important to me that we meet however often we have to meet to give you all information that you need so that you can make an informed decision. The other element I talk about here is scenarios. What we oftentimes find is that there may not be one single answer. This can come to play in the development of revenue requirements. We may be looking at a large capital project or projects coming forward. We may look at different funding scenarios. If we fund it all with cash, if we fund it, part of it with debt, we may look at breaking that capital project plan out longer. Those are all different scenarios we can run for you and look at what those pictures look at like. The other types of scenarios we'll oftentimes run is different options for consideration of rate design. To the extent we need to look at those options, we can certainly look at these different scenarios. I intentionally build my models to allow us that flexibility to realize that sometimes the decision-making process can be circular in nature. It is not uncommon for everybody to sit around and say, "Yes, we have to fully fund all of this stuff and this is the way we're going to do it." And we get to the end and look at the answer and say, "Ooh, maybe not. Let's take a step back." And so we want to give you that flexibility as well. The other element I wanted to highlight for you is that I'm also providing support through the end of the study period. By this, oftentimes, again, I have no intention of handing you a report, walking out the door, and not talking to you for five years. But instead, letting you and your staff know that I'm available to the extent the need arises. Whether that's as you're implementing new rates and your billing system company calls and says, "Hey, what does this mean?" Or, "We need to talk through this," or "How do we fine tune this?" Absolutely available to do that. Or if it's in two or three years from now and the city of Austin says, "Guess what, the rates are going up more than we planned." That's fine, we can come back and run it again and input that change into the model to see what that does. Those are all, again, things that I want to emphasize we're there and available to do. That being said, I know I provided you with lots of information and there's lots of information in the proposal I provided to you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I guess my first question would be bandwidth. If you're president of the company and you're going to be project lead, how many other projects do you have?
Fortunately, I have two projects that are, have to be done by the end of the month. And I've got one very small thing that's going to continue into January. And so I do have the bandwidth. And sometimes if I have to tell my husband, "I'll see you later," I do that as well. We get it done. Yes, sir.
So, a project kind of the scope, size of our city? Any estimates on kind of how long it would take to work through your process?
I typically quote 60 to 90 days. If the data's available and shipped over quickly, we can typically expedite that faster as well. Yes, sir.
She answered all my questions at the utility commission meeting. I'm good.
Okay.
And I listened to that meeting, so it was helpful to hear all of that.
Great. Well, Ms. Hedin, thank you so much for taking the time to come speak with us. We'll be, well, it'll be up to council whether they want to take action later in the evening to retain one of the two firms.
Sure.
And no doubt we'll be in touch. Appreciate you making a second trip up here.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you. Do you need me to stick around or?
Uh, no, don't need to.
Okay, great, well, have a great evening.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you so much.
Guess that doesn't look like mine.
All right, and then...
Good evening, mayor, councilman. My name is Dan Lanning. I'm here representing Willdan Financial Services. With me is Dennis Gurrell, who's going to actually be presenting a little later on for another subject, another project. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Willdan so that you kind of understand where we come from. We're a very large publicly traded corporation that started in 1964. Named Willdanners, the two founders that named Will and they were named Dan. So the combined name came with Willdan. I don't know why Will got first, but should have been Dan. The, we have four divisions and we have anywhere from 1,000 to 900 employees in the offices throughout the United States. The financial division has about 1,200 clients, active clients in the United States alone, as well as in the South Pacific. We're one of the national leaders for rate analysis and development of rate methodologies. And we have a dominant position in Texas when in 2015, five years ago, Willdan purchased and took over Economist.com. Economist.com is a company run by, or was developed and run by Dan Jackson, who's the vice president now of Willdan, he's my boss. He will be the principal and the project manager for this project. This is sort of a measles chart, we call it, that sort of tells, shows you where all our client base is. We basically spread across the entire country and in several, like Fiji and several other South Pacific companies that we go regularly to. There are about 11 offices or points that we have, that we work out of, including one of the main ones is Orlando, Plano, where we're out of, and in California. Right now, for the state of Texas, we have about over 80 clients. We'd like to have 81 with Rollingwood. But we also have over 300 rate study projects that we've done in the past 20 years. Most of that is with Economist.com that was started by Dan Jackson. And in fact, all of the projects that we list, Dan has been the principal responsible person for those projects, as well as the one that was presenting to council boards or commissions. This is a sort of a sampling of our company, of our clients that we have in Texas. You can see that we have Texas, we have clients all over the state. East Texas, West Texas, up in the Panhandle, we have it down in the valley, South Texas, Central Texas, and North Texas. As a matter of fact, we just finished one of the study in the city of McKinney where I live. And I can tell you I'm not very popular with the neighbors there. But what matters most to you is Central Texas. We have, we've had clients, recent clients, recent studies we've done with Alamo Heights, Leander, Liberty Hill, we're actually doing a PACFE study right after we finished the rate study that we've done for them. We have continual work with Seguin Insurance. And we have, we have other types of companies. We have SUDs and local government corporations that we work for in Central Texas. The project team looks like this. Dan Jackson will be the principal and project manager responding, and he will respond directly to you, city council, and the utility commission. I will work with Dan as a senior analyst. And Dennis Gurrell, who's here, will help as assisting us, the project analyst. Dennis, we're going to talk a little bit about the model that we have, that we provided. It's a well-recognized model. Dennis is the one that came on board and actually developed an executive dashboard that we have, that we can do what-ifs with. What sets Willdan apart isn't just one item, it's a series of things that are put together, put together with, we are, even though it's an international firm that have qualifications and resources throughout the country, we still act, Dan still has our company, our particular Plano, act like a small boutique firm. We keep track of our clients, we do what the clients need. We make sure that they are happy and we want to become their trusted consultants. Our experiences, obviously, because we've had over 300 rate studies that are similar, very similar to the wastewater rate study that we're looking at. We, our experience is almost unsurpassable compared to other entities that are, would be applying for this project. Our project team represents decades of experience. I've been in the industry, working as a rate consultant or as an auditor or as an accountant for utilities for over 35 years. I've actually worked for the Public Utilities Commission in New Hampshire for a while, so I've been on both sides of the fence. Dan himself has been in the, in the industry and working on utility rate studies for over 35 years, combined 70 years. But that's not the only thing that we do. I mean, we work with, with utility organizations like American Water Works Association, where I was actually part of the team in the rate committee that had updated the last, I think, three additions of their rate, their M1, their rate model. And I also was, was the co-chair for New England Water Works Rate Studies, as well as developed, they didn't have, when I came to Texas, they didn't have a rate committee, so I developed it with the Texas American Water Works Association and was chairman for that. But one of the things that, Dennis, can you get that book? One of the things more important for this rate study is that I also worked at the task force that developed the finance and charges, the current finance and charges wastewater, for wastewater systems manual. And that's the manual that we would be using for the wastewater study. Well, one of the other factors, and one of the major factors is that, as my boss always says, that ratemaking is an art, not a science. We understand that there's social, community, and political aspects to this. It's not just a math situation, it's not just economics. We come up with what the answer should be and then we bring it to the city and we help the city relate that to the customers, the customer base, help them to understand it. The idea is to bring it so that we can implement something, a rate plan that's successful. This is the model that I talked about earlier. It's a rate model that is basically recognized all over. And this in particular is one that we use. This is a dashboard that summarizes the 50-some-odd sheets we have in our rate model. Because if we didn't, then it would be very hard to show what's going on and summarize it. This we use either projecting five or 10 years. And in this case, we have four different charts that we're using and showing that would have, that would basically show what the net contingency that would be available based on the types of the rates that you would have. That's after your expenses. It also shows the debt service, current and future debt services, what it would look like, your total revenues, and your debt coverage that you would need to follow in order to issue future debt. The reason that this dashboard is so important is because we can do what-ifs right here with this. We could take those toggles underneath that, the green where the wastewater is, and we can increase and decrease the rates. We would come up with a recommendation, staff or city council would ask us, "What if you did this, what if you did that?" On the, on the right-hand side, we have our, where we can put debt that we're going to pay for, the CIP, your CIP. On the, on the right-hand side, we have our, where we can put debt that we're going to pay for, the CIP, your capital projects. You can slide capital projects back and forth, sliding debt back and forth, increase rates, decrease rates, do a what if, and it's all real time. The nine, we, we plan on completing, um, the nine tasks that we've outlined in our proposal in thirteen weeks. The tasks that we have have deliverables such as, uh, we, we're going to have a, a billing summary we're going to build based on the information, the billing data that we're provided. We're going to have a comparison of customer bills to your peer or neighboring cities, so you'll see what your wastewater rates, where your wastewater bills fall for the customer itself, not just the rates, but the bills. And then, uh, we'll develop the revenue requirements, so the rate revenue that you get is going to be covering and make you whole as, as far as the wastewater utility is. Then we'll take that and we'll allocate it to customer classes and determine what customer class needs to have any kind of increase, any of, of, over others if it may, need be. And then we'll come up with what we call our, our rate plan. And we'll show the rate plan based on existing rates as a baseline, and then we'll do alternatives. Based on what we talked about before, there's going to be things that, that social or, uh, political type policies that you want to implement, that you would want to have and look at, see what would happen, and then show the impacts of all on, on the rate payer, on the customers. And then we'll have a report, and Dennis, could you pass that report? This is a, a report that we have, we provide, could you, you go ahead and do that, because I have to talk to you. This is a, an example report of a, of a, of some neighbor of yours in Alamo Heights. I don't know how close the neighbor it is, but it's, it's still one of the neighbors. And we want to point out that, that we've had all kinds of compliments in this, on this report. We basically have three different components. The first component is an executive summary where you, the council member, can look at it, see what the findings were, and see what the recommendations are in a very brief, out, in a very brief few pages. Then we have the in-depth analysis that we've done, how we come up with the rates, how we come up with the revenue requirement. And then for those people that really like to dig into the numbers and put their finger in the wound, we have summaries of, of all of our spreadsheets that, uh, that show how we came up with the numbers. And those are all, you know, one, two, three, that's what we have in our reports. We plan to do that whole, that's, that report is a deliverable. The, uh, meetings with staff is, is a deliverable, meetings with Utility Commission is a deliverable, and at least one, probably two meetings with, uh, the city council is a deliverable that we plan. And for, for that, we plan to, we were asking for a not-to-exceed amount of, of nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Why choose Willdan? We have extensive experience, not just in Texas, but across the country. We provide more than just a written report. As I said, as I said, we want to be your partner. We want to be the trusted consultant. That's what we work for. That's our bottom line. We want to have a success, so we're going to drive for that. We have a proven track record. Please contact our clients that we've given you any references, if you haven't so yet. Where, the reason we, we put them in there is because we know, with, with those eighty customers that we have, those customers are repeat customers. We may have gone first time out with, in a competitive bid, but they always come back. The, um, and this, the final point here is that we, we're specialized firms, which means that we focus on our core competencies and provide personal attention to unique needs of our clients. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If, if there's any questions, this is my favorite slide right here.
Counselor?
That's all mine last time.
Got it. So I understand that you presented to the Utility Council?
That's correct.
Uh, Commission rather, and, uh, thankfully, it's all video, so most of us have been able to.
Actually, Dan Jackson, so you can see him in, in person do it. He does, he's got, he does it all over the world.
So, uh, please don't take the lack of questions as, as, as disinterest, simply the fact that you've probably heard them before.
Okay.
Heard the answers before. I guess one question I, I would have, though, is, uh, bandwidth, eighty, uh, clients in Texas, you guys handle all those out of Plano?
Yes, yes, and including Arizona, Arkansas, Oklahoma, um,
Okay.
And actually, we've done a couple in California, too.
So, and how big is your team in Plano?
Right now, we have, uh, four, well, we have an administrative assistant, two administrative assistants, uh, three of us, and we're adding a, a, a fourth very senior person that's coming on in January.
Typically, uh, a project start to finish, how long does it take?
Or thirteen to sixteen weeks. With yours, because it's, it's, doesn't include water and wastewater, it's a little bit condensed, but about sixteen weeks, um, it usually takes. In, in, in this case, we estimate it to be sixteen, thirteen weeks, assuming we get the data that, that's needed. I mean, that's one of the key things that's, uh, that's an issue, is, is getting the data in the manner that we need it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, now I will call up Item Five, Presentation and Interview of the Firm and Responses Submitted to the City's Request for Proposals for a Consultant to Perform a Building Fee Study.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Dennis Goral, and I'm here with Willdan to present you the building permit fee study. Uh, first, let's talk about the project team. Here we go, the project team. Uh, so Chris Fisher is the Principal in Charge, Tony Thrasher is the Project Manager, myself, Dennis Goral, is going to be the Financial Analyst, and we have Robert Quaid as the Quality Assurance. So the project team has completed projects all across the nation, similar projects, uh, and we've highlighted some of our California, Arizona, and Texas clients. Uh, so recently, in the past year, we've completed, uh, similar projects in Texas for City of the Soto, City of Mesquite, uh, Mesquite, City of Missouri City, and Sunnyvale. So let's talk about policy and the laws. So the general standard are, is that individuals or groups that receive a private benefit should pay for that benefit that the city encourages in providing that service, especially if there is no benefit to the community as a whole, which is pretty simple, pretty basic. Recently, there were laws that passed that affect this even more and, uh, makes you want to generate the revenue you need from the, the operating departments. So for the Senate Bill Two, it limits the amount the general fund can generate revenue, which pushes it that the operating departments need to generate the revenue themselves. And you have House Bill Eight Five Two, which pertains to the building permits, which says, residential dwellings cannot be charged based on the value of the dwelling anymore by municipalities. So that brings us to the study objectives. So what are the objectives for the study? First thing, we want to develop a rational basis for setting fees. We want to understand the total cost of providing each service and each fee individually. We want to identify the subsidy amount for each service and each fee, as well as for the department or division as a whole. Uh, next, we want to make the appropriate fee adjustments that are needed. That goes back and forth with city staff and council, because there is a lot of policy and directives. Uh, so that brings me to my next point, that we want to make sure we maintain with your policy and your directives, and make sure we're compliant with the state law. Last thing is we provide the city a model in Excel that is updatable and has all the lists of fees, and it's very easy to update the salaries or the information, and it will give you the full cost for each service and fee individually again. So what are the study phases and tasks? So we broke it down to three phases. So the first phase we have is the data and, uh, analysis. We conduct department interviews. We talk to every person involved in that department that will, that works on the services. We collect time estimates from the employees, and we, uh, calculate labor costs. And then we get to the second phase. Second phase, we develop what we call fully burdened hourly rates. With that is we take the direct services, the indirect services. We add to that the department overhead, which is the administration within the department. And then on top of that, we also add the citywide overhead, because these operating departments are receiving a lot of support from finance, from, uh, human resources and other central service departments that we need to account for as well. And then we come to the last step, where we define the full cost for each fee. So you have the subsidy amount, you have the full cost, and then you decide whether you want to reach a hundred percent cost recovery, or you set your own recovery levels that you want for each type of service or fee. So these projects, uh, we estimate that it will take us about three and a half months to complete, uh, with the, the, this type of project. So we estimate that for this type of project, it will take us about ninety-four hours to complete, or twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-five not to exceed that amount. And with that, I thank you all, and now I'm to the question portion. You guys have any questions?
I actually have a question on the fee, um, because on page, this is page ten of your proposal. Um, you have a not-to-exceed fixed fee of twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And down in the notes below, it says, first it says, the fee includes all direct expenses. And then a couple items below, it says, city shall reimburse for any cost, any costs Willdan incurs, and lists a bunch of other expenses. So I'm having a hard time understanding whether this is really a not-to-exceed cost, which includes all expenses, or if you have additional expenses that are added on top of that.
This is a not-to-exceed cost right here. The reason we put that in the proposal itself is because these projects are a little different from the water and wastewater, in a sense where water and wastewater, you dump the whole data you have from your system, and we go through the data and analyze it. We don't have to go back and forth with staff. Sometimes with these projects is when we go to staff, staff doesn't come back to us for a month. And then we have to go back again. They don't come back to us for a month. I, we, every week, we try to give them a notice and make sure they know that we are still thinking about them and we need to get this done. But sometimes these projects can last a little longer depending on the staff responses, because again, we got to collect time estimates, which is every employee that works on that fee or task needs to put how, how long they think it takes them to complete that. Uh, and then once we provide that and we, uh, develop the full cost, with, uh, we show you the subsidy, it takes time to actually set the fees. Uh, for example, once you set the fees, then you have to go to council, and council might not like some of those fees, so you have to go back and change. These, one of the nightmares of these kind of projects is, I think, it could, uh, one of the projects lasted two years just because the, 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 the employees did not respond at all. And that, that's a nightmare. That's a scary case scenario. The projects that are listed there in Texas lasted us about, uh, three to five months. And one of them is taking a little longer to complete just because council wants to go back and forth, and they're scared of some of the increases needed. Uh, because this is kind of a new topic in Texas here of, uh, calculating the full cost for each fee. But with these new laws and the changes in the laws, it's becoming more apparent that we got to recover the full cost.
Okay, so I'm not sure I'm still clear. So this is a.
This is not to exceed. Yes, this is not to exceed this fee, yes, ma'am.
So the other, the additional costs are not added on top of that?
No, no. And we wouldn't just, I mean, we would definitely come back to you guys and say that we need to go longer if we need to. Uh, but this, this very rarely happens. Any more questions?
Considering how responsive our staff is, uh, it's conceivable that we would actually come in under your rate at twelve thousand.
It could. If, if we get responses right away from staff, or we turn, as soon as we get data, we turn it around. Our goal is two weeks max to get all the data in the model and turn it around back to staff. So we, we try to get our part done as fast as possible.
Sounds like a race. Counsel, anything else? Dennis, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Farmer, Presentation and Status Update of the Commercial Corridor Analysis from the Retail Coach.
I'm sorry? A book. Just that one? That one? Okay. All right.
Safe drive, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for making it down.
This one, you'll just scroll. Yeah.
All right, cool. Thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council, it's, uh, it's good to be here today, uh, to talk to you about the commercial, uh, corridor analysis strategy that we've been working on for the last several months. Uh, for those of you that are not familiar with me, I, I think I've, uh, met most of you, but, uh, Aaron Farmer, President of the Retail Coach. I was, uh, on the ground here in Rollingwood on multiple occasions, um, and had a chance to, to really work this project and really be the lead on this project along with a couple of our, our other staff members there. But I want to talk to you first about the, uh, the retail market analysis. We really broke this really i- into two phases. We had the retail market analysis phase to understand where your consumers are coming from, what kind of demands you have here in Rollingfo- Rollingwood for retail, develop, development, commercial, what you're looking at there. So we'll look at that first, and then we're going to talk about, um, the highest and best use analysis, and also the, the zoning analysis we took a look at. Uh, one thing's for sure, uh, in Rollingwood, you have people that are utilizing your services here, whether it's retail, restaurant development here, uh, that are coming here on a regular basis from outside of the city limits. And, uh, what you see on the screen here is a, is a heat map, and, and what this shows us is where your consumers are coming from. So, um, you know, I tell my clients this all the time, but if you're, if you're looking to recruit retail, if you're looking to recruit restaurants, or really get an understanding of who, who you serve as a market, you want to look at something like this that, that really shows you what is your trade area, how far are people coming in. So, um, I always ask this question, but I know the answer to it. You know, how many of you have a cellphone? You know, and, and the answer is today, now all of us have cellphones. Um, it's a little scary to think about, but from that standpoint, you're, you're being tracked from, um, where you're going, where you're shopping, where you're coming from, and it's not being used in a negative way, but it's being used in a way to help us understand what is that demand, what is that opportunity in the community. So, uh, the darker the red on the screen here on this map, uh, the higher the concentration of consumers. So it makes sense, um, you're getting a, a high number of consumers from here, uh, Westlake Hills, but then even into like the downtown area, they're coming to shop and eat here. Uh, we ran these cellphone analysis on, uh, a number of different shopping centers, a number of different places. Trader Joe's was one that we ran it on, um, because it's one of the only Trader Joe's really in the area. You had people coming from a long distance to get that. My family showed up. My house, if I was to zoom out on this map, I live west of Dripping Springs, and I showed up on this map. So you have certain things that are drawing.
Did you just ring fence?
What's that?
Did you just ring fence Trader Joe's or what?
We did. So we drew a polygon around it, basically, basically a geo-fence around it. Um, we did that for, for certain shopping centers as well. We looked at.
What all did you look at?
So just about everything in this town, uh, to be honest with you, basically every retailer that's here. So, you know, we took Mira Vista, we took, um, you know, uh, I mentioned Trader Joe's already. I even looked at some of the retail that's just outside of your community, so just, uh, just in the neighboring community there to see where people are coming from. So, way it works, basically, we draw the polygon around a specific location. The data is good up to about three feet. So, um, I try to go within about three feet of the boundaries of the store and also the parking lot there, and that's how we're able to, to track where they're coming from. So, um, obviously, again, like I said, you have a large draw of people that are coming here. What's interesting, and what I looked at in this process, was looking at the daytime population versus the nighttime population. You've got a completely different daytime population or workforce population than you do, uh, from a night, nighttime population. So looking at the shops at Mira Vista i- is what we're looking at here right now. You had over a twelve-month period, so this is going back from about October of, of this year to October of last year. You had an estimated number of consumers of about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand that were shopping or did shop at that, at that shopping center over a twelve-month period. Looking at that, uh, those visitors, those hundred and sixty-seven thousand visitors, they made roughly four hundred and sixty thousand visits. So you have repeat, repeat customers that are, that are coming in on a regular basis. We also looked at it, uh, based on, uh, the visits trend, so we looked at it on a daily and also a weekly basis. You're pretty consistent, uh, throughout the year, um, on the, the days, uh, and, and weeks of, of what that looks like. Um, so, you know, pretty consistent there, no, really not much seasonality here. You know, with the daytime population that you have that's always here, um, not much seasonality. Um, just looking kind of at another, another map here, uh, this is the park. We also looked at Rollingwood Park, and that was one of the things that we had talked with, uh, to the, to the RCDC and also the mayor, was getting an understanding of, uh, who utilizes the park. And, uh, it's pretty interesting to see, but you do have people from outside of the community that are utilizing the park on a, on a pretty regular basis. Um, so, uh, again, the darker the red on the map, the higher the concentration of consumers, uh, that are, that are utilizing. So again, the darker the red on the map, the higher the concentration of consumers that are, that are utilizing that park. Obviously, with sporting events or sporting, with practices that happen out there, you have people coming from, from within the region that are, that are coming there. So some pretty interesting information to look at there. What we've done, based off of all of the data that we've pulled up, is we ran and identified a retail trade area. So I, I tell my clients this all the time, if you're a city, forget about your city limits when it comes to retail and it comes to where your people are coming from. Look at it from a retail trade area standpoint. So we defined two, really two trade areas here, the primary trade area, which is your consumers that are, that are shopping and really eating in Rollingwood on a, on a regular basis. That, that population, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit so you can see it, but that population in that primary trade area is roughly-
Twenty-eight thousand five sixty-four.
Those are your consumers that are shopping and eating here on a daily basis. They're, they're, they're making repeat business, repeat trips there. Makes sense that your average household incomes in that area, in that area north of two hundred thousand. Just looking at what's happening here with the, the housing market, what's happening in the region from a, from a housing standpoint. Average household incomes are over two hundred thousand, median household incomes are about a hundred and forty thousand, so very strong from that standpoint. What was interesting to me, one thing I looked at down here in the bottom, your median age is about forty-one, and your average age is about forty point seven five. So, you know, depending on how you look at it, that's, some will look at that as an older population, some will look at it a younger population, depending on who you're comparing yourself to. I will tell you, what I noticed in here is your, your age in this community is decreasing pretty rapidly. When we look at it from that standpoint, your average age, your median age is going down. And that's, that's pretty consistent with what we're seeing in the, in the region as a whole, but it's a younger population that's, that's really moving into this area. So I wanted to kind of point that out. And that's, again, that's looking at that primary retail trade area, which is, is, you know, a little bit more than the city limits. But then we also looked at what we call a retail trade area. And these are your consumers that are not necessarily shopping on a daily basis, they're not making multiple trips per week. They might be making one or two visits per week, or really one visit per week. This trade area is much larger. It's about a hundred and nine thousand i- is, is the population of that retail trade area. So, you know, talking to the manager at, at Trader Joe's, talking to some of the other shop owners here in the community, restaurant owners in the community, they, they confirm this. This is what that retail trade area looks like and where, where they're really coming from. So makes sense, as you get out a little bit further, your average household incomes decrease, you're down to about a hundred and seventy-five thousand is the average household income. However, that's still obviously really strong. And then your median household incomes are about a hundred and eleven thousand. And then your median age and average age just drop a tad bit. So looking at this from a, from a retail standpoint, you are, you are a destination for certain types of retail. However, people are, your citizens are also leaving this community for other types of retail, other types of restaurants, just because you don't have it. So whether it's clothing, whether it's, there's certain other categories, a lot of the casual sit-down restaurants is where a lot of that leakage i- is taking place. So we wanted to kind of take a look at this before we started looking at the highest and best use analysis, before we started looking at the zoning analysis, to, to really know what is that demand, what is that opportunity? To do that, we looked at what we call a gap analysis or a leakage analysis. I'm gonna, can y'all see that okay? Basically, we looked at seventy-five different retail sectors. So everything from casual sit-down restaurants to sporting goods stores, you name it, we took a look to determine, are you, are you serving those markets? Are you, are you, is there a leakage or is there a surplus? And I will tell you, just kind of looking at this, this, this analysis, I won't run through all of them, there were some, some pretty immediate needs. Looking at, I'm gonna get to it here real quick, but looking at the opportunity, let's say in, if I can find it here real quick, in restaurants, full-service restaurants, for example, there's about sixty-two million dollars that, that leaves this community on a yearly basis and is spent outside of this community at restaurants. And I realize that's a, that's a huge number, but if you think about as, 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 as people today, we're spending more money out to eat than we are at the grocery store. So if you look at it from that standpoint, it makes sense. And, and that's one of the things is, is kind of, I was in town, kind of studying this, there is an opportunity for restaurants. There's an opportunity for other types of re- retail as well. But I, I won't go through all of these, but the leakage analysis really kind of opens the eyes, opens your eyes to understand what is that demand. Now, the reason for looking at the highest and best use analysis, which we're gonna jump into here, was, you know, there's not a whole lot of places to, to put new retail or new restaurants in, in this community. Now, you do have a, a couple of vacancies in some of the shopping centers here, but from a, from a, just a vacant land standpoint, there's really not an opportunity to do those sort of things. So thus the need to, to really kind of take a look at and really look at the commercial corridor analysis strategy that we put together.
How do you come to the conclusion of that sixty-two million?
So yeah, so we've got a, we've got a model that we use, but what we do is we take the, the average consumer in Rollingwood, or average consumer in that trade area. We identify what is the, what is the average consumer in the US? What do they spend on each of these specific categories? And then we have a, an income index that we use, and we're able to identify, your incomes are higher than the state average, they're well higher than the national average. We use an income index to determine what that opportunity was. And that's, that's a model that we've had for about twenty years that we've used, and every year, based on, you know, different factors, economy, those sort of things, we have to adjust it up or down, but it's very well respected in the, in the retail industry.
And how do you know how much is lost versus what the opportunity is?
Yeah, so we look at potential. So potential is how we come up with that number I mentioned there, and then we look at actual sales. What's actually happening within the city limits, and then compare the two. So we get the actual sales, like from the, from the comptroller's office is how we come up with that. Yeah. So just kind of shifting gears here a little bit, and I'll, I will, I will encourage you to take a look, I went over a lot of data. There, there are hundreds of pages worth of data that we put together. Didn't want to run through all of that with you now, but take a look at that if you get a chance, it's some pretty interesting data. So just jumping, jumping here, we looked at the, the study area here. This is the study area that, that, that we really focused on for the highest and best use analysis. So obviously, it's your main commercial corridor through the community, going from MOPAC down to your, or over to your boundary here. So really, any, any commercial property within Rollingwood, we took a look at. So this is that, this is that study area for the highest and best use analysis. We basically drove the community, walked the community, looked at every single site in this community that was along this corridor. We looked at existing marketing, market conditions, we looked at the trade area population, we looked at traffic counts, we looked at traffic patterns, we looked at sightline visibility for, from both the primary and also the secondary arteries. We looked at ingress and egress on every site. We looked, is there adequate parking at the site? We looked at site, different site characteristics, we looked at topography of the site, and then we also looked at proximity to other retail and office clusters. So when we come in and we do a highest and best use analysis, this is not something where we're sitting back at our offices and, you know, we're just looking at it from an aerial view. We're walking each site, we're driving each site and really taking a, taking a hard look at that to understand what's there. So we also ran a zoning analysis. Basically, we looked at the zoning of each property along that, along that corridor that, that we looked at there to see, you know, were there, are there needs for changes to some of the zoning? And I will tell you, there are. We're gonna go over some of those here in a second. But the goal was looking at zoning options, so that in the future, you can, you can help maximize the ROI to the community for, so, so we'll look at that here real quick. So what we did, I'm gonna zoom in again, but we looked at, again, every property along that corridor, and we gave them a site description. So the site description, like for example, Park Hills Baptist Church would be a site description, Chevron Gas Station. We have a column here for highest and best use analysis. Are they serving their highest and best use? We also have a column for current zoning or existing zoning on the property. And then the, the last column there was, is there a zoning change recommended? So just to give you a good, good, good example here, there were, out of all of the highest and best use, out of all of the properties that we looked at, the highest and best use, there were only two or three of these properties that are actually, in our opinion, serving their highest and best use. A couple of those, former Gaddis Pizza location. It's, it's a, it's a restaurant. It's a, it's a, it's a retail space, very small space there. There's not much else you can do on that specific site just because of the size of it. The, the Center One Office Building serving its highest and best use from our standpoint, from an office standpoint. But then we also looked at current zoning for each of these, and then we also made a recommendation. So I'm probably not gonna go through, I don't think you'd want me to, Mayor, to go through every one of these.
Appreciate you respecting everyone's time.
Yeah, going through each of these, but I'd encourage you to take a look at this analysis. Lot of time was spent really getting through, going through this analysis and looking at each property. So you can kind of see what that looks like, and then we also have comments on each site as well. So we're not just saying that, yes, a zoning change needs to be made, or we're not just saying it's not serving its highest and best use. Every property has comments with it why we're making those recommendations.
Can you explain a little bit what you use as a basis for determining its highest and best use?
Yeah, so basically our expertise. So-
But yeah, but what's that based on?
Yeah, so literally a hundred years of experience in, in, in doing this type of analysis. So Kelly Kofor, which the mayor met, and I, and actually Amber has met a couple of times, we, he was with the site selector. That's, that's what he did before coming to the Retail Coach. He worked for a national site selector, looking at potential properties. So before that, he was in real estate. My background is in site selection, helping retailers, developers understand basically the background of these sites, what their opportunities are, is it a site, is, does it have potential? So using our expertise as well as some of our other team members, we came in and, and really took a hard look at each of these sites. And, you know, back to what I, what I mentioned, a couple slides up. Each of these sites, what we look at are, these are the main factors we look at on each of those sites. And then based off of those factors, we make our recommendations. So, you know, if you were to look at somebody else coming into this, they, they would probably have a similar responses to we do, that, that we do on this, but they might have, you know, some different recommendations just based on what their experience is and those sort of things. But the key here is we know this market really well. We know what the demand is for certain types of uses right now, whether it's retail, whether it's, you know, office or of mixed-use type uses. So that's, I mean, that's really how we came in and we, and, and did that, and just spending time on the ground and, you know, making those recommendations.
I don't think that was what my question was. My question was more like, what do you base the assessment on? Is it based on what's the best opportunity to bring in sales tax money or to bring in-
Gotcha.
Property tax money or for quality of life for the residents?
Yeah, so that makes sense. So it's a mixture of all of those. So we're looking at, you know, what drives a lot of this community is sales tax revenue. And if you look at, from what I looked at, your, your sales tax versus property tax ratio, twenty percent sales tax, property tax is about eighty percent. Does that, does that sound about right? So when we looked at that, that's one of the things we looked at there. We also look at quality of life for res- for the residents here. You know, there's a lot of things that go into quality of life, but, but economic development is a part of that. You know, places to eat, you know, different nightlife, you know, really those sort of things. They look at, you know, parks, you know, you look at hospital districts, you look at care, everything that goes into quality of life. So that's how, that, I mean, those are the things that we look at as we, as we go into this, in this process. So just moving on here really quick, we had several zoning recommendations that I wanted to hit on for you. One thing that we did notice, looking through the, the zoning, the code of ordinances you have there, the code of zoning you have, there's very little consistency. As you go through that corridor, there, along B Caves Road, there's just very little consistency. One property will, will be zoned one, one thing, and then it'll just, it'll just change for each one. There's no consistency based on kind of location there. So we've made some recommendations based off of that. One recommendation that we do ma- we, we have made is consider removing the hospital district zoning from, from Rollingwood's list of zoning options. With the lack of developable, developable property within Rollingwood, this, this zoning option just going forward does not make sense. In the case of properties currently zoned hospital district, if they ever sell, i- it's our recommendation that these sites be rezon- rezoned to another option. Really, I think this is, this is high priority as soon as possible.
They should go over that.
What's that?
They should like that.
Yeah, absolutely. Because I mean, property value's gonna go up, I mean, mixed use, I mean, you're, you're very limited with, with the hospital district, basically. Or with the hospital zoning district. One recommendation that we do make, with your zoning classifications being a little bit older, is that you look at adding a mixed-use zoning option. You probably all have heard about mixed use, it's kind of the key phrase right now. But we would recommend adding a mixed-use or MU zoning option to the, to the list of zoning options. Basically, it allows for more flexible uses, combining the different types of developments, so whether it's residential, retail, hotel, et cetera. We're seeing that throughout the, really the region, throughout the state, throughout the country. That's, that's something to definitely look at there. I also wanted to make the recommendation that you consider combining C-one and C-two zoning options into one category. I've been through your, your zoning and, and the definitions of the zoning districts quite a bit, and, and there's very little difference between the two at all. In fact, the average person's not gonna notice the difference. So what we would do is just-
What do you consider the difference?
So the actual, there's not really a difference, to, to be completely honest with you.
Good that I don't feel stupid.
What's that? No, it's, it's difficult to tell because you would think C-two would be a little more dense.
Yeah.
Higher density, and it's not, it's just not clear.
Yeah, there's, there's real, there's really no clear difference, to be, to be completely honest with you. I'm sure there was a reason for having the two zoning classifications, but I haven't been able to figure out what the difference is, to, to be completely honest with you.
So if we eliminate C-one or combine them, I had always thought maybe it was like office space versus retail restaurant. Is there, maybe you're getting there, I mean, is there a new zoning classification that would come in to play there? Like this is where we want to keep office space near residence because it's quiet, developed, and then this is where we want to see restaurants and retail, multi-use.
Yeah, I mean, we don't really have a recommendation on that yet, but I think, I actually think that's a good idea. Because I mean, there's certain properties that back right up to residential that, you know, maybe we need to come up with some kind of zoning. I mean, there is, there is an office zoning already, which covers that, to, to be completely honest with you. So, and those, that's different than C-one and C-two. So that's, that's probably, what's that?
Is that like within our PUD?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that'd be PD, so plan and development. I think that's the, the zoning classification is PD. And that'll, that'll protect homeowners and, and those sort of things. Couple of other things we wanted to make some recommendations on, and then I'll wrap up for you here real quick. These are really focused more on community and economic development recommendations. Due to shallow properties along B Cave Road, B Caves Road, multi-level development should be the focus for Rollingwood moving forward. So that's, that's a no-brainer. Just because you are, you are landlocked, you don't have the, the ability to really annex vacant land anywhere. Our recommendation is to consider, like you're already doing in some cases, consider to, continue to focus on multi-level development going forward. Consider providing incentives to those property owners and/or developers who, who develop their properties this way, that are looking to move, to move up. Now, we're not saying build skyscrapers here, but to a reasonable level, get to, you know, that, that's gonna help. That's gonna help bring in, the question was asked about the taxes and looking at those, that'll help you accomplish more from that standpoint. Due to the properties on the north side of B Caves Road backing up to residential property in most cases, consider focusing that, that in driving the multi-level redevelopment to the south side of B Caves Road. I think you could still have some multi-level development on the north side, but only to a certain extent. The south side, just, you have a better opportunity there because you're not backing up directly to houses in, in most cases. I, I do want to recommend that the City of Rollingwood and Rollingwood Community Development Corporation pay close attention to any properties along MOPAC and B Caves Road that go up for sale or have had a recent change of ownership. Just with the market and what we're seeing right now, whoever's gonna come in, some of these properties are coming for sale, coming up for sale. You might have seen that recently. You want to pay close attention to that because a new owner could, could own a property for thirty years and, and never do anything with that. So you want to have some kind of relationship to be able to let them know, you know, what's, what's happening. And, and what you're looking to, what you're going for as a community, what you're, what you're looking for from a development standpoint. I have it on here, but a change of ownership can have a huge impact, whether it's good or bad, for years to come. Consider having a staff member focused on building relationships with property owners in the community. I think y'all are already kind of, kind of working on that. And then I was also gonna make the recommendation that you consider hosting a quarterly commercial exchange, Rollingwood Commercial Exchange. And maybe it's not quarterly, maybe it's, maybe it's twice a year, or some other event that's, that's really focused with, with regular meetings, with chambers, city officials, commercial realtors, brokers and developers. The goal of these events would, would be to allow for the opportunity to, to help shape the vision of that redevelopment for Rollingwood. This event would also allow for sharing of available properties throughout the community or any other important real estate news. I will tell you, just talking to some of the property owners throughout this community and some of the larger developers- I will tell you, just talking to some of the property owners, uh, throughout this community and some of the larger developers, a lot, you, you are, you've got a pretty good, uh, your vacancy rate is, is, is great. Uh, is, it's not bad, you don't have a lot of vacancies. However, a lot of your tenants that are here in these shopping centers, they're on one-year leases or even less. So that's kind of scary to, to know that's the case. Although, if you're looking to redevelop certain properties like this, that actually can work in your benefit as well. Because if you're working with a developer that, or a property owner that wants to go multi-level or wants to change up the layout, they can get out of those leases pretty quickly. So you want to know that, you want to pay attention to that. Part of our process was identifying property owners and the history and the background. So as you look through that zoning, um, and highest and best use analysis, uh, you'll see some of our notes there, kind of related to that. But just to kind of wrap up here, um, continue to focus on retailer and developer recruitment. This might sound silly to, to some of us, um, because you are, you, you do have, you are pretty much filled up from a, from a retail and development standpoint. However, the, the market's changing rapidly, um, you know, you could lose a retailer. Gaddy's would be a good example, they, they closed, what, not too long ago? So you've got a vacant building there, um, you know, having retailers to come in, restaurants to come in. There is still some vacancies in some of your larger shopping centers in the community. So even though you've got a pretty good, pretty good handle on that, you want to continue to recruit. I recommend that y'all attend the International Council of Shopping Centers, uh, conventions, uh, to stay in front of developers, stay in front of retailers. One thing I did find is that there are properties that, that might not be on the market right now per se. But the, the, the owners of these properties are willing to sell if, if the right buyer comes on, comes along. So keeping in touch with developers, retailers, I think is key there. Consider taking a new look at the parking requirements for new development and/or redevelopment moving forward, um, and making any changes that might be necessary. I think it's, I think it's probably about time, I don't know when y'all looked at that last, um, but it's probably time to look at that again. And then continue to maintain the gateway entrances into Rollingwood and high-profile areas. One of the things that we noticed is many people that come eat here or, or come shop here don't know they're in Rollingwood. They, they, they think they're in, uh, Westlake, okay? And, uh, that, that's not necessarily a bad thing, but it's also not necessarily a good thing. You want them to know they're in Rollingwood. You, you want to have that pride of community and those sort of things. Love what y'all are doing with the website, the new logos and all of that. I know y'all have, have talked about some of these new gateway entrances and that. So I, I just kind of reiterating that, I think that's key, key because often a person's, uh, first impression of a community is shaped by how clean and neat it is. So continuing to build on that is key. And then, uh, continue to focus on the branding for Rollingwood and creating a place that, that really offers everything. I'm excited about the opportunities here. You know, with your location, we're here next to the park, uh, Zolkert Park, with your, your loc- your location, um, you know, just really a great location. There's some connectivity that can happen with park trails and, and, and those sort of things. And if you can get some of these developers, these property owners to really buy into that, you, I, I think you could see some really awesome things happen here with multi-level development. That's not a bad thing, that's, that's actually an amenity, um, and then helping to improve that quality of life for your residents by, by really bringing all of that together. So there's a lot of data, I'd encourage you, that spreadsheet, I, I don't know when, if, right now is the first time you've seen that spreadsheet. But I, I'd encourage you to look at each property and our recommendations there. I really do think there's an opportunity. I met, actually met yesterday with the developer, uh, or an owner of one of the, one of the shopping centers here in town at his request, um, that is looking to possibly redevelop his center there. So that's, that's exciting to, exciting to see.
Appreciate it. We've actually had this, uh, information, uh, one of the folks at the DICE have had this information for a little while now.
Okay, great.
And it's, uh, we put it out i- in the public sphere. What we're actually going to do, uh, for anyone, uh, listening or watching, uh, interested, uh, is we're going to, uh, make, um, most, if not all of this information readily available, uh, through the city. And then we are going to, uh, make what we think is probably, uh, the most critical information available, uh, on our website.
Great.
And so we'll be doing that in the near term. And then of course, uh, RCDC, I think will continue to be a primary point of contact and kind of spearhead.
Absolutely.
Some of these plans. Later on in the evening, uh, the council will have, uh, an opportunity to weigh in on, uh, for lack of a better term at this point, a task force, so to speak. That will be a combination of, uh, RCDC, um, planning and zoning, and ideally, uh, at least a member, uh, from the city council. And potentially, uh, uh, a member or two from, uh, of our, of our residents, so.
Great. Well, just, just to add one more thing if I can, um, you know, I, I didn't grow up in Austin, but had family here in Austin. My grandparents lived in Austin, uh, right over by Hills Cafe, and, uh, we actually spent some time in this, in this area. And, uh, I will tell you, Rollingwood looks the same to me that it did, um, you know, back then. And, um, again, not a bad thing, but, but just looking at the region, looking at, at what's happening from a, from the standpoint of new development, redevelopment, those sort of things. Just would really encourage you to, to, to really take a, a hard look at these things. Because, um, with the new, um, the, everything that's happening in, in this community, everything's happening in the region. It's just very important that you look at redevelopment and those opportunities, or else you're going to start to see some of the, you know, people o- out, going outside of Rollingwood to buy thing, buy even more.
We're going to start seeing it so much as we have seen.
You have already seen it, absolutely.
That's pretty, pretty well evidenced by the disparity between our revenue streams. We're not, it's not a common place to see a community, uh, with such a lopsided, uh, sales tax versus their, uh, their ad valorem or, and or property taxes.
Absolutely, and that can be scary.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, uh, we've, we've been reminded by a couple of folks that that's less than ideal.
Absolutely.
As, as we start to consider long, uh, mid and long-term, uh, financing.
Sure.
For the city.
Good.
Great, well, Aaron, I appreciate it, uh, council? Yes, ma'am?
Um, I'm wondering, uh, I think it was back in two thousands, we had a corridor study done. Is that something that y'all looked at, uh, when you, uh, did this new study?
We.
You haven't?
We haven't seen that, no.
You haven't seen it?
The difficulty.
I mean, that, that one to me.
We had difficulty locating.
I haven't.
Oh, there you go.
I'll be happy to send it to you.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to take a look at it, to be honest with you.
I mean, there was just a lot of, um, similar.
Sure.
Um, recommendations.
Yeah.
That were made in two thousand, um, to what you're making now.
Absolutely.
And then some real innovative ideas about, um, pedestrian crossing from our area, um, as we're developing B Caves Road.
Sure.
Um, you know, and as we're looking at that project now, um, you know, how do we move citizens safely across, um, in different ways? So, um, I would love to, I'll send it over to Admiral Dyson.
Yeah, I'd love to, love to see that. We.
Thanks, ma'am.
Those, those are things we're looking at. And I think the, especially that, you know, the walkability, accessibility, kind of tying it in with, with Zolkert Park, that, all of that is, I mean, you take advantage of that and you, you cure a lot of these issues.
Yeah, and the zoning is particularly, um, interesting because, uh, even at that time, they said you need to combine C one and C two.
Did they? Okay, good, so, yeah.
So, so what we did, uh, by the sound of it, is take a report, uh, nearly twenty years ago and promptly throw it on shelves and allow it to collect dust.
It sounds like you may have done that.
Right, so, uh, we could, uh, as a body, then keep that in mind, uh, as we go forward later in the evening to, uh, decide whether or not, uh, appropriate move is to appoint a task force, uh, to take ownership of this process and make sure, uh, that all of this great information that we've just, uh, paid for, uh, doesn't go sideways.
Yeah, and I, I want to emphasize we're local and, uh, part of this process is continued consulting for the next several months. We're excited about being part of that process. We want to make sure it doesn't sit on the shelf.
Thank you.
Great.
Um, on the site descriptions?
Sure.
Most of them are easily identifiable, but there's, is there any way we could get an address on?
So we actually have an updated one that has all of the addresses on there. I don't think, I think I sent over a presentation that didn't have that on there. So we'll get you a spreadsheet that has all of the addresses, yeah.
Thank you, council, any other questions? Aaron, thanks again.
All right, yeah, y'all have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, at this point, I will call up the consent agenda, uh, items seven through fourteen.
Move adoption of the consent agenda, if there's no one, we'll knock the thing out.
Sorry, did we have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor, council?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank council. Uh, item fifteen, discussion of possible action review, applications and make appointments to the board or to the park commission, utility commission, RCDC planning and zoning commission and the board of adjustment. Uh, we've received, uh, one application, uh, from Josh McKay. We just accepted Josh McKay's resignation from RCDC, uh, and he would, uh, like to, um, have the council consider his application to join planning and zoning.
I guess you've been here six months now?
Back.
Well, right here.
Yes.
Been back for six months.
Yes. Sorry, just, just making clear that Josh is not a new member of our community, just reas- had to reestablish his residency.
Right.
Right.
I move to appoint Josh McKay to planning and zoning.
Slayer.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to P and Z, Josh, thank you. Uh, item sixteen, discussion and possible action on the selection of Western Hills Little League as the lesssee of, uh, Rollingwood athletic facilities and authorizing the negotiation of a lease by and between the city of Rollingwood and Western Hills, uh, Little League. We have the lease in front of us. It has been, or the proposal, rather, uh, in front of us, not a lease in front of us. It has been a hard, uh, well, long discussion, I guess, between, uh, Buck Shapiro, uh, Wendy Huntley as park liaisons, uh, and, uh, both Steve Frank and, and Chad Smith, uh, with Western Hills Girl Softball and Western Hills Little League respectively. We have Steve here, but I think we all probably know what's in front of us. I assume that we've had an opportunity to review the proposal? Counsel? Yep?
Yes, sir.
The action item before is just to authorize negotiation of the lease, and then it will be brought back for council approval.
And so?
So moved?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second?
So fifteen years is a really long time.
You bet.
And we have never had it for fifteen years before.
Well, that's, that's not true. Uh, we have, uh, as a matter of fact, uh, the first couple of leases with the city were significant in timeline.
We had ten, ten, five and five. Yeah, we've never had fifteen.
Okay, so fair enough. So, um, ten, two, back-to-back ten-year leases, um, and then the, we dropped to five, as I understand it, because, uh, they were perceived under performances, uh, under the ten-year leases.
That can be negotiated.
You bet, and I, I would agree with that.
But that, fifteen years concerns me, that's, that's a really long time.
It's fair, I think what we, we need to balance as a, as a community, what we have expressed as a community, uh, going back years now, uh, it was expressed very, very strongly, especially during the, the park, uh, master planning, uh, how important Little League and Girl Softball are to our community.
Absolutely agree with that.
So one of the.
I'm just concerned that, that we have any lease that's fifteen year, I mean, we're reviewing all of our.
Sure.
Consulting services and everything else on a five-year basis, so to say that.
So if I could wrap up my thought.
Fifteen, yeah.
My point being, um, we have underscored the importance of, of these organizations to our community. These organizations, uh, uh, would like to be, be in our community and to express that, uh, under a long-term lease. One of the other aspects that we have really underscored, especially lately, uh, is a need for a greater capital investment from these organizations into our facilities. It is not unreasonable to me, uh, and I, I don't believe it's unreasonable to many people, to, to understand that if you are expecting a significant capital investment, you have to provide a significant level of assurance that they will be the primary beneficiary of the, of that capital expense. So if what we're proposing is, you know, I guess, in terms of nearly a triple-digit investment into our, uh, facilities, in exchange, they would like some level of assurance that, uh, we're not going to pull the rug out from under them, uh, or, uh, have a discussion every five years about whether or not, uh, we want different organizations in, uh, that's understandable. I don't know if it's necessarily the right way to do it. That's up to you, uh, this, uh, panel to give me some level of direction, uh, and, and our city staff some level of direction as we move forward negotiating the terms of the lease. So I would assume that the council can give me some direction this evening on where they would like to see things go. And then I would hope that the park commission, uh, would be able to provide, uh, similar feedback and direction, uh, as we move forward in negotiation with the two organizations.
I think that, um, Little League and Girl Softball are the anchor tenants of, of the, those fields. They've been here as long as the fields have. We are the only other, uh, softball field in Eames. I think it's really important to have that available, especially because we have that as one of the only girls, all-girls sports, um, in our area. Um, I am not opposed to a longer-term lease. I do want to see that we have some improvements, um, made to the fields and give them the opportunity to make bigger investments by having some security. And I do think having a longer lease doesn't mean that they don't have to follow the terms of the lease. There are termination clauses in there, there are, um, enforcement.
There's going to be covenants and conditions.
There are.
So I'm on the same page as Wendy and we've spent a lot of time on this and there's, there's provisions that we can include in a lease to protect ourselves.
Right.
Whether it's one year or fifteen years. But we can't expect for any tenant, whoever it is, to make significant improvements to the property and not give them adequate time to lease it. In my opinion.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with ten-year lease. I'm just thinking that when we don't have, as it's currently laid out, we don't have anything in here that addresses the potential to increase the pri-. You know, we don't know what the costs are going to be for maintaining and operating the fields fifteen years from now. And we've got no basis or no opportunity here to change the, the lease rate.
You bet, so.
Well, that's correct, but the problem with that is, is that's their proposal and that's not including our counter proposal to their proposal.
And I'm just saying that these are my concerns and I would like to be considered in what we come back to them at.
Yeah, yeah, I think we all feel that way.
Okay, well, nobody said anything about it, so that's why I was.
I think we're just authorizing the, the negotiation to begin, for us to, to have, authorize the city administrator and the mayor to start having those discussions. And I think your point is well-taken, um, and we've had ten-year leases before, so. But a longer-term lease in my eyes, um, is not a bad thing, um.
No, I don't think five years is long enough. I, I don't know why that was dropped back down to five years in the past, but, um, fifteen years concerns me.
Or twelve. Eleven, maybe.
Well, I have no doubt that, uh, both, both organizations have stuck with us this long, uh, during the discussions. Steve, I'm just looking for you to nod on this one, give me some level of assurance that, uh, as we negotiate the terms, uh, of a, of a lease, that you guys are amenable, to having these discussions, everything from, uh, potential cost escalations, uh, reasonable cost escalations year over year, uh, to, uh, you know, non-performance, uh, concerns and, and maybe even to the point of terminations, um, a- as well as, uh, term length in general. And my goodness, I, I have no doubt that there's going to be a laundry list of things in between.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, I was just here for questions, I know, hopefully, yeah, but I know we've met a lot. And I would just say, uh, the way the proposal was drawn up is, uh, we didn't want to set like, okay, here's what the annual lease payment is, here's what the capital improvement is. It was like, here was a big number.
Yeah.
To negotiate how the terms can be set up, I guess, uh, yeah, whether it's stair stepping escalations of rent, um, or annual capital improvements. But the big kicker was that thirty thousand kind of upfront.
Right.
To try to get the fifteen-year lease.
Right.
To make the investment. So that was the thought process as we put, presented it. And yes, we definitely understand all leases come with termination clauses and breaches of, uh, lease and stuff.
Good. Great. Great. Counsel, we have, uh, a motion and a second. Uh, we've had some discussion. Is anybody else, uh, up for discussion? Are we ready to call a vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, thank you and thanks to both Little League and Girls Softball. Look forward to working with you guys to, uh, get something definitive in place. Uh, and just for clarification's sake, um, those definitive documents will obviously come back before, uh, the city council for, for approval.
This is just authorization to negotiate.
That's correct.
Yes.
All right. Uh, with that, we will call up item seventeen, discussion and possible action on ordinance amending the city of Rollingwood's Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-four, signs and advertising, article two, sign regulations, division four, variances, sections twenty-four dash one-twenty-two, hearing, and providing a savings clause, providing, uh, severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Counsel, this ordinance, um, it speaks to a variance process for, uh, people who would like to have a variance on the sign ordinance. And the current language says the city council shall set a date for hearing before the council. So that delays the process another thirty days. So we're asking to, um, change the language to shall hold a public hearing prior to the approval of, or disapproval of the requested variance. If you approve this, then we'll present the, um, ordinance to the mayor for signature tonight. If he, so chooses, he can sign the ordinance and then present it to the city secretary, and then it's on file with her, and then we can hear the next item, which is a request for a variance to the sign ordinance. But it was just a very clumsy process and hopefully this will clean that process up a little bit.
Move adoption of ordinance number two zero one nine dash twelve dash eighteen dash seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Uh, do we have, uh, discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For set? Okay, uh, now we will call up item eighteen, public hearing, uh, discussion and possible action on a variance from the city's Code of Ordinances, sections twenty-four dash ninety-one A and twenty-four dash ninety-one F five to allow for a building-mounted sign on an office building and for the lettered, uh, for the lettering to exceed thirty inches in overall height, uh, as requested by Wellsky. The public hearing is open at eight thirty-three. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to address? Nobody signed up? Did you want an opportunity to, uh, well, counsel, you have a, uh, you have paperwork in front of you, uh, showing what's being, uh, proposed. Yeah, I, I believe I'm right to say that this is going to the, uh, top left, or sorry, right corner with the street at your back for MOPAC on phase three of Endeavor's building, uh, Endeavor's new, that's Endeavor's new building. It'll be, I guess that would be the east, top east corner, uh, which would then face, uh, MOPAC and the eastern, uh, portion of BK's Road. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any, uh, thoughts or questions?
So it's replacing the Latin work sign that's there that's already?
The Latin work sign is already removed.
Been removed and that one was lit and it didn't, we had, never had any complaints from neighbors. It doesn't face neighbors.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay.
And the sign is, um, almost the same size? Or that she's not in her, so they might, we might also put that Latin work sign here.
Uh, I move to approve a variance from the city's Code of Ordinances, section two four point nine one A and two point, point, two four point nine one F five to allow for a building-mounted sign on the office building and for the lettering to exceed thirty inches in overall height as requested by Wellsky.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Discussion, counsel?
Does this have to go in front of P and Z or Board of Adjustments or anybody, or is it?
That's straight to council.
Per, per our code.
Per the code.
And do we have to find a hardship before we can grant the variance?
You have to fi- you have, the hardship has to meet the requirements of your s- code, which is, I think, in your packet?
Which is the section twenty-four point one-two-four by criteria for approval?
Yes.
Just from a general process standpoint, it seems like if we have a procedure for granting variances, then we should be following our
Well, if you, the assumption is, is that, well, you're complying with the procedure. The assumption is if you make a mo- that if this council makes a motion to approve it and it is, someone seconds it and it's approved, that this council believes that it's met the cer- the requirements of the code.
They've sent this letter in saying allowing the variance would help the visibility of the sign, which will be at a disadvantage due to the proportionately larger sign of the buil- size of the building to which it's affixed. So that's the hardship. And we're approving them having the sign of that size lighted in order to, uh, improve the visibility of the sign.
I don't read, I don't read this to require a hardship.
Hardship.
I, I just require it that it's, it's gotta have some special circumstances or conditions. I mean, it, it's not a hardship. It's not, it's not the same as a zoning variance at all. It's not, it's not.
You have it the first sentence?
True.
Okay.
So it's, it's differently.
So what it says in the first sentence, the applicant must prove hardship?
It does say that in the section twenty-four point one-two-four.
Oh, it does say, uh, they must prove hardship.
That's right, right there at the very top.
Yeah. But the, the, the proving of hardship are the requirements below. So that's what your ordinance says is a hardship, those things. A hardship is special circumstances or conditions applying to the land. That's, that's a hardship in this context, 'cause that's what your ordinance says, that the findings have to be, or the determinations have to be, findings, determinations.
So it's a big building. We need an appropriate-sized sign and illumination. I, I think that that is something that would need a variance because it's against our code, so.
I'm good with it if we're voting. So if we're moving to vote, I'm gonna vote for it.
Yeah. We have a second?
Well, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Floor's open for discussion. So if there's discussion, if if not, call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Stay.
So three in favor, uh, one abstention. The motion, motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, item nineteen, discussion and possible action on a quote from CleanScapes in the amount of twelve hundred dollars to install drip irrigation along Gentry. Amber, could I, um,
Sure. Um,
Bug you for that one?
The drip irrigation is, um, beyond repair along Gentry, and so this is a quote to, uh, CleanScapes has recommended just for the installing, um, the drip irrigation in that section.
Where exactly is it?
Um, in the strip along, um,
Just between the parking lot and the street?
Yes, yes.
Or the sidewalk and the parking lot, whatever?
Yes. This is something that, um, the park commission favors. Um, as far as I'm concerned,
Thank you.
um, drip irrigation wasn't very successful there the first time. I, I don't know if it will be successful there a second time.
It won't be, 'cause it's not successful at my house or anybody else's.
Yeah, so as far as
It doesn't work, and it does, and if it does, it only does for a short period of time.
I don't wanna throw good money after bad, but if, if y'all know a little bit more about whether you think this will be successful,
Yeah, literally, it doesn't.
I'm open to that, but this is something the c- park commission wanted to do.
I did hear some discussion about this from CleanScapes, and the reason that they recommend the drip irrigation there is because it's a small swath of land and it's right next to the road. If you have sprinkler heads, you have too much loss, especially when the wind blows. And the, so the grass there in order to get water, you either have to drip irrigation or nothing, and there's trees there, so that what's been happening, or what had happened in the past, is Jackie Bob and the team will drag hoses across the parking lot and water the trees.
Mm-hmm.
And then they try to kill me with the hoses at night, 'cause I trip over them. Um, and, and they have to reel them back up, so it's really not sustainable to have trees there and grass there without some source of water, and sprinkler heads are not an appropriate
I, I get it, 'cause I have that problem at my house, but there are certain sprinkler heads that actually do work in those, those spaces. They just have to get
So
Excuse me.
Okay, well, so this is
It might be, it's a little more work on the front end, but it's way less maintenance over time.
This is just what they recommended. I'm not an expert in that, so if you know, um,
I don't know exactly where it is, but if I went, I would doubt it, I'd probably figure that out.
Do you wanna work with, um, Catherine Horn and CleanScapes and come up with an alternative recommendation?
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Sure. I just know drip irrigation does not work.
And it's just that it's sticking out of the ground and you can tell it's been cut and disconnected and
We've got time to
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It is not functioning at this point in time and we're still having to drag hoses to water the trees.
Yeah.
And we had some complaints about the trees not getting enough water and looking kinda sad.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We're probably good right now, 'cause it's not hot, so it's not eating as much water as it normally would, but
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
If it was raining, I'd say we're good, but it hasn't rained anymore.
Yeah. I, I'd have to just go look at the section with them and figure that out.
Y'all can pass home. It's across from where I'm staying right now.
All right.
It's that area by the parking lot, right across the street from Gentry House.
Yeah. All right. And I get that, I, I know that they say that, you know, when you use regular sprinkler heads, it'll water maybe the concrete and whatnot, but the problem with drip irrigation is, is most of the time it only waters one spot. So it doesn't make it all the way through.
I think though, isn't that what's
So it's like half a dozen one way or the other. You're, it's, there's no perfect science, so.
Yeah. There may be something where you have drip irrigation for the trees and you can find it longer and
You can do the drip irrigation on the tree where it sprays like directly on the tree. The grass is a little more tricky. And it, drip irrigation doesn't really work for grass in Texas either, 'cause it gets hot and then there's no way to ever cool it down from above.
Yeah.
So maybe we should
So if you go like thirty days without it raining in the summer, and even if you have drip irrigation, it still gets burnt out, even if your drip irrigation works.
Maybe we should have something different than grass in that little
Probably.
That's a good point, yeah.
Strip right there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you put some kinda ground cover or something that's requires low water usage.
So
Mm-hmm.
So make sure that we stay on topic for the agenda item. Is it fair to suggest at this point that perhaps we should get, um, get back to, with, with park commission on, uh, alternative, uh, considerations?
Right.
I will defer to my colleague here who knows more than I do.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Great.
Yeah.
Great, so we'll, we will, uh, postpone, uh, this item and, uh, perhaps see it back in June where. Chief, I've got you up for the next handful. Uh, so we'll call it twenty. First, discussion, possible action on implementing a paid police reserve program. You wanna give us some, uh, color on your thoughts there?
So, we're currently down to two reserves. Uh, as I've mentioned in the past, we're in an environment where it's very competitive trying to get officers. We're having trouble finding paid officers. Getting all, people to do this for free now is, uh, increasingly difficult. The two officers that we do have, uh, have tendered resignations. Uh, I have spoken to them. They would be, uh, they're interested in, in the possibility of, of, uh, maybe remaining if there's a, a paid, uh, aspect for their, for their labors. I mean, put yourself in their position. We have one, for example, who's working a full-time job and he's been very dedicated to the city and, you know, his wife's wondering why he's coming here, missing a, a weekend for free. So, and it, it's not, uh, it, it's not completely a novel concept. There are examples of paid reserve programs in Texas. I think the closest to here would be, um, I think Jonestown, uh, especially with their lake patrols in the summer and so forth. So I was looking at that, uh, just to, to help with retention and maybe recruit some, uh, you know, and then if we're short and we have to fill, if you look at the cost of an overtime, paying an overtime of one of our current officers, you know, I, I don't think really we'd, it'd be that much money. Um, so it's something
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, the
Is there an additional training that goes into, uh, our reserve officers or?
So in terms of the state of Texas, there are three classifications of officers. There's a peace officer, full-time peace officer, part-time peace officer, and a reserve officer. Uh, in terms of the training to meet the licensing, there's no difference. They have to have the exact same certification and meet the same training and the same, um, cycle of in-service and maintain the same credentials as, as a full-time sworn officer. So from that standpoint, there's no difference. Uh, it's just what you title them. If you, you know, full-time officer's obviously a full-time officer with benefits. I think if you call them part-time, then there's some federal implications in terms of benefits they may have to receive. And then the reserves are pretty much however you wanna run it. Uh, I checked with T. Cole, the, uh, the certifying licensing, uh, agency for Texas, and they said there is no, uh, there's no requirement to not pay or to pay a reserve officer. That's totally up to the, uh, to the agency, if that answers the question.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you, you've suggested, uh, twenty-six dollars per hour, uh, at least twenty-six dollars per hour.
I, I At least twenty-six, you know, if you're, if you're looking at that, then you're, if they do say sixteen hours a month, I mean, you're looking at less than five grand. Again, if we're calling in, uh, if we're calling in officers on overtime basis, I mean, that, that could easily, uh, rack up that kinda money. So that's pretty much your only cost. If you're looking at the cost to equip them and train them, we're already incurring that when we take on a reserve, so. Just
So good.
Um, so just to be clear, um, i- is there any requirement, I, I was gonna look in our city code. I hadn't pulled it up yet, but if somebody's working, um, as an employee of the city, um, that we offer the benefits and retirement and all of those co- like, are there any costs to that if we start paying them, that we don't incur if they're reserved?
They'd have to work at least, um,
You can wait part-time. Yeah.
Thirty hours a week to be eligible for TMRS benefits, and then twenty hours a week to be eligible for, um, health.
So will we have any policy in place to make sure that if we're gonna pay reserve officers, that they stay below that threshold, so that we don't come into a situation where then we have to start paying these bigger benefits?
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's easy to do. Currently, the requirement is sixteen hours, when, and really the only, uh, I think in, in the recent history, there's only one officer that's actually been fulfilling that commitment. There is no minimum or, or maximum requirement, uh, by the state. If you have the guy come in one hour a year, you know, as long as he maintains his certification, as far as the state's concerned, he's, he's fine. I think it's if you go over certain hours, then you get into more of a part-time status, so certainly
Does that also include the special holiday rate pay, like if they were to come and work ACL, um?
Um, if we made it a requirement as part of the reserve program, then they would be paid at the whatever rate is approved.
Reserve rate or
Reserve rate.
Event.
But they probably would most likely wanna hire on as a contract employee, and then they would be paid the ACL rate.
But even our, even our own officers, when they work o- outside their regular hours, they get the ACL rate, so they would
Right. I'm just wondering if it
I, I think though
Start adding toward the T. R. M. S.
Right. I think we have to be cognizant if they're working ACL, that, that counts towards the hours we're watching.
Right.
And, you know, that, currently, that's, it wouldn't be hard to track one or two officers at this point.
Come on, independent contract.
The other thing to, for you, the council to consider is, um, i- i- if we create this, you know, you could have other councils in the future, other chiefs, so you might wanna cap how many paid reserve spots you have, 'cause, you know, you don't want that to get out of hand, but, uh, a- at the moment, again, we're just down to two reserves, so I'm just kinda thinking long-term.
But we only pay them when they work.
We would only pay them when they work, correct?
So why would we need to limit the number?
Um, well, if we had, if we hired, say we had five working at once or something, if we got really, you know, just, just something for, for you guys to consider.
Now, I, I think that this is, has merit and, um, I, I know that the officer that, um, has the experience, uh, being able to train, that that's a great resource for our department that I was really sad to see go. Is, is that something that he may come and do as a reserve duty to come in and do, offer some training?
Absolutely, so the, the capacity in which I utilize the officer, again, do- doesn't, uh, uh, I would, my primary goal would be to have patrol coverage, but it could be other, uh, it could be in a training capacity. It could be taking care of, of administrative duties, uh, helping draft policy, whatever benefits the department.
Right.
And, and if, you know, if I have somebody doing one task, I mean, that's a force multiplier in the sense that I don't have to have officers off the street doing that.
And, um, is this something that, like, where, what part of our budget is this coming out of? Um, do we have some money, um, to play with to, if we started paying our reserve officers?
I believe we would this year, just in, in, in the, uh, salary savings that we have. I mean, we're, we're out three officers at the moment.
Okay.
We were out at least one when I took over, uh, and, and even if, even if I had the ability to, to, even if I had three good candidates right now, by the time we background them and everything, there's gonna be months of salary savings. So for this particular budget cycle, I don't foresee a problem. And again, we only have one or two reserves. You know, to hire additional reserves, again, would take the background and all, all the things to get to that point. So I don't see an adverse impact on our budget.
So are we having to pay? While we're short of officers, are we having to pay for Travis County or whoever is filling the interest?
We're not currently, ma'am, no.
Okay.
Um, we're, we're, uh, we're holding the line. Uh, Assistant Chief Pomp and myself are actually, we are the day shift for the city currently. So we're, we're trying to, uh, be, uh, fiscally responsible, but, uh, you know, that, that can only go on so long. The good news is though, that our two recruits, uh, this month will be riding solo and, and we can plug them into schedules and that's gonna create a great relief.
So I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job, um, and on a day-to-day basis, uh, you're able to hold that line. Uh, as you said, uh, the challenge that really our community faces is when we see events like we did last, this past weekend, uh, where you guys really get stretched thin and then, uh, our options with how we address, uh, those types of, types of situations, uh, can be limited to barriers and signs, unfortunately, uh, with, uh, limited, uh, uh, bodies to, to help us enforce. Uh, and then to make sure that, uh, uh, our, our safety, um, is really minded at the, to the standard that we, we deserve and we expect. Uh, my personal thoughts on this, uh, I think it's a, it's a great idea. Basically, anything that we can do at this point to encourage, uh, the right folks to, to step up and, uh, uh, really be a part of what is a great, uh, department. Uh, I would suggest that, uh, if council approves, we do so, uh, contingent on, uh, our legal counsel just taking a peek to make sure, uh, that we're not running afoul of any, uh, Texas, uh, workforce, uh, or, or labor, uh, considerations.
As long, as long as you stay under the threshold.
Under thirty?
Under thirty.
Five, mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, implement a paid police reserve program at twenty-six dollars per hour, uh, with the contingency that office, reserve officers have to work under thirty hours. Is it per month or?
Per week.
Per.
Per week.
Per week.
Do you wanna set that to twenty for the TML health benefits?
Is it twenty what we need? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
And we actually.
Under twenty.
Just, w- we have a sixteen hour, is it a sixteen hour minimum or?
Per month.
So we, and that's just a, I don't wanna say arbitrary, I think it's kind of standard with police departments, but it's not a legal requirement. But most departments require a sixteen hour commitment.
Okay.
Uh, just, just to make sure they're getting value, cause I mean, there's always, there's a liability in having reserves. You're, you're, you're having to equip them and train them and you wanna make sure you're getting some significant hours from them. We can change that up or down as we need.
So I'll revise it to under twenty, um, on my motion.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Discussion, council?
So on the twenty hours a week, is that averaged or is that a maximum on any week?
I believe it's averaged. Hmm, I don't know, I would have to get.
We'll look at it, I don't know.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head.
That's a, that's a good question.
Cause I know the IRS also does, they do average.
How about we'll just make sure we stay in compliance with.
They've gotta have another job, right? I mean, they're not going to be working part-time.
Applicable. Correct. Correct.
No, but, I, I do, I do think that's a very, it's, it's a smart thing for us to look at. Let's, let's make sure. If, if it does roll down to an ACL weekend, you can clock up those hours pretty, pretty quickly in a week, right?
Right. Right. Right.
Um, yeah, so to, to Charlie's point, uh, let's just make sure, uh, that we do take a close look at how we implement the policy.
Twenty hour, to include any special assignment, so we, all hours.
So do I need to amend the motion just to include that, um?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We have a motion in second. Discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries item twenty-one. Discussion, possible action on implementing a police cadet sponsoring program?
So, um, currently, the city of Rollingwood, uh, the only applicant pool we have are individuals who have already completed a regional academy, uh, and, or have came from another agency that are already certified as peace officers. Increasingly, these regional academies, the, the percentage of the students in the, the cadets in these programs are already sponsored by other agencies. So what we wa- wind up with is ones, a smaller pool, those who didn't get sponsorship. Um, so, uh, something Rollingwood's never done before is, is taking maybe advantage, hiring somebody before they're a peace officer, sponsoring them through a regional academy, and there's, you know, there's the CAPCOG, uh, I think Austin Community College. Of course, there's a number of them throughout the state of Texas. And then, uh, I've been speaking with the, uh, UT Systems Police Department or Police System. They have a academy here in Austin and they train all UT police officers for their fourteen facilities throughout the state. And sometimes they have, uh, seats available and they offer those free to, uh, to other agencies. That's kinda what piqued my interest and I, I was exploring that, that opportunity, uh, so, um, that, that's one of many, many academies, but even if you, we pay full tuition, it's probably somewhere between four and five thousand. Uh, they're typically six-month programs, uh, so my thought, and my preference would always be to hire somebody, hopefully that's already certified and has several years of police experience, cause that's less we have to put into them. And, and so this is not my first choice, but it, it just gives us that option to, if we're, you know, we could find a really good applicant that, that we think would be a good fit for the city and then we send them to the, um, to the academy. He's our cadet. Uh, we pay them, we, i- if we can't find one with a free tuition, we provide the tuition. We provide the uniforms, we provide the ammunition, everything that, that would be required, uh, of a sponsorship. And then, you know, when they come out, they belong to us. We could go to their graduation, it would be our own cadet. I, I would hope that would instill some loyalty. The other thing to keep in mind is it, there's no cost on this to us. It's actually a savings because I'm asking for us to look at a new pay scale of, or a new classification of a cadet. But it's still the same FTE, it's just at a lower pay. So in a sense, you know, we're, we're saving money until they actually become full-fledged officers under our current pay scale.
What would the academy's last?
So the academy can, can, would take six months typically. And then our FTO program typically in this city takes about three months, so that's the downside, why it's not my primary, uh, choice. Cause you're looking at nine months before you get an officer that can actually make calls all by themselves, fill a slot on a shift. But, you know, it, it's just a tool in the toolbox as we get into this competitive market for officers that it'd just be nice to have. So, uh, and again, there's, uh, there'd be, there'd be no cost to the city, because, you know, whether we hire a full-fledged officer at this price or we're hiring a cadet over here, it's still that same FTE.
Didn't we talk about doing this at one point?
We did, yeah. Uh, I don't think it got, uh, we just didn't follow up, I think is the short answer. Uh, I think Max might have proposed it.
Somebody.
Uh, yeah, uh, when he first, uh, came in as, as interim chief.
Okay.
So I imagine it almost, uh, investing in farm league, if you will.
I beg your pardon, sir.
Investing in kind of a farm league, uh, so to speak, so to speak, and then.
So, so to. So, so to speak, and you know, it would be, also there'd be a contingency that, um, you know, they have to successfully graduate and get their peace officer license. If they don't, then we could terminate the employment, you know, it, it, cause it's not a position that the city would carry on forever, it'd just be, we're, we're, we're hiring you as a pre-officer if you don't make, i- if you can't successfully meet the conditions or you drop out, then you're, you're no longer employed with us.
Is there, uh, uh, a, 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 a level of shame or a black eye that would go with, uh, one of our cadets who, uh, maybe defected to a neighboring jurisdiction shortly after coming in?
Um, yes, I mean, well, I mean, in, in, personally, yes. Um, but you know, I mean, it's, we live in a world where everybody's looking for.
It's at will, sure.
They're, they're looking for better pay and benefits. I mean, that's, that's how many people are in the workforce.
Understandable, and what we can do as a jurisdiction is, uh, rise to the level of, uh, caliber that we expect here. Figured out. What do you guys think? Um, makes sense, we've discussed this, uh, before as, as Gavin pointed out. Um, you know, we hired a, we hired a chief to be, uh, innovative and, and bring, uh, uh, bring some smart ideas to the city.
Um, so for clarification, does this increase our number of positions, like of sworn, sworn officers in the city if we create a new position?
Negative, it would, it would, it would just, that would hold that slot until they've reached that peace officer status. So currently, we have nine sworn positions. If we were to, i- if we were down to eight and we hired a cadet, that would prevent me from hiring a good candidate that might come up, so.
But we still hold at nine sworn officers. It's just that you can hire one as a cadet instead of.
Correct, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hire a cadet if we were full force.
Okay.
Cause where would they go, right?
Right.
That, that would, now that would be asking you guys for a new position, so that's not what I'm asking for. That's, and again, this is just something if, i- if, if, uh, uh, going through the hiring process, I, I, I don't, I'm not finding the right fit for Rollingwood, then instead of getting the apple out of the barrel, maybe we pick one off the tree.
And is that something we make a motion for, or is it like just give, um, the nod of, in direction that that's okay as a recruiting pool?
It'd probably be nice to have a motion in a second approving the, the, um, prod, the program.
I move to approve, uh, the implementation of a police cadet sponsoring program.
I second. Motion in second. Discussion, council?
So is there any, are they providing any service while they're in the academy?
Not.
Through the training program?
No, ma'am. Their full focus is on, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a full forty-hour week, uh, school. I- i- it's a full semester and they're focused on their curriculum, uh, learning all their, uh, legal requirements.
Okay, so like they're, like they're in school?
Like they're in school, correct. And we're providing them a means to be able to live while they're going to school.
Okay, so it's tuition and salary while they're training?
Correct, but the salary would not be, we're not going to offer them the salary that they would if they were, uh, if they were a sworn officer. So it would, whatever, whatever their tuition is and their salary will not, i- it will not go over the, uh, the amount we have allotted. So there's no cost to, to the city in, in regards to that. It's money that's already budgeted.
So is there a way to put a minimum service requirement for providing the sponsorship?
I wondered that too.
Well, I mean, my sister did this, a training program for nursing, whatever, where it's like a six-month training program.
Yeah, they do.
Right.
And they give it to you, you know, but then you're obligated to work for them for another six months or a year or something after that to kind of recruit the.
I, I think that's.
Like we did with the sign-on bonus.
I, I think that's more of a legal question. Uh, i- it's not common practice in, in the law enforcement though, um, that, that there's any kind of obligation. And that's true if you went to the Corpus Christi or the Austin Police Department where they actually have their own departmental academy. You can get your peace officer license and, 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 and leave.
They got a lot more spots than we have.
That's true, that's absolutely true, but, yeah, I've, I've.
It's quite the same investment.
I've checked with, with, uh, Cedar Park, Maynor, a- all these agencies that actually use a, a, a spa, a cadet program and they don't have any requirement, um, e- even the UT itself that, that, that are put, hiring these officers to work at specific UT campuses, uh, they don't, they don't have that requirement. So whether it's something we can do or not, uh, would be a question for our attorney.
Well, you can do it.
Seems like considering our size and our budget, that might be a.
May, maybe the cost of the tuition.
The big thought.
Right, yeah, and that, that's, that's exactly where my, my, my thought was. It is, if you don't serve out, uh, so much of your, uh, or you elect to leave, then reimbursement of the tuition over a certain period of time. Um, it's not dissimilar to how we've offered, uh, our bonus, uh, signing bonus.
Yeah, we've done, uh, that, I mean, that's a similar thought.
So that y'all know, from a practical standpoint, the odds of getting reimbursed of that are slim.
Not, not high.
You'd probably spend more on legal fees.
If you're paying them a salary though, then.
No, you can't take it out of their salary, because then if it goes below, if it's an F, if it's a.
If they worked it, they gotta be paid.
FLSA program, problem, you cannot take it out of their salary. You would have to go after them for reimbursement.
It's kinda catch twenty-two, the, the market's not doing it.
Yeah, we explored this and had a conversation with Charlie about all of this and.
We wanna sound welcoming to, right, we don't wanna have a lot of legalese where.
Right. Right.
Right.
You know.
We're just giving them an option to potentially hire some new people.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, this isn't like our preferred option, it's just.
Correct.
It's far down the line. I think we're spending, I mean, a little too much time personally on that. At the end of the day, hopefully he doesn't have to use it, and if he does, we gotta have some faith in our chief to just make some good decisions. And not micromanage everything he does.
Thank you.
Read.
Oh, great, well, we have a motion in second. Additional discussion? Call them both then, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, um.
Thank you.
You're still with us, chief?
Yes.
Twenty-two, update discussion regarding, uh, combined transportation, emergency and communication center, uh, uh, fees?
So, um, I believe you all were provided the spreadsheet that, that I was provided with. So currently, uh, we pay nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars a year for our dispatch services. Uh, because they're, they're having trouble as, as many governmental entities are in terms of, uh, how they can raise revenue. Uh, they were given direction to look at all the services they provide, and, uh, C-Tech is, is one of them, and see where, uh, maybe they're not capturing costs that, that they're incurring. So this is, uh, this is not necessarily a proposal of what we will be charged. This is an education to us what they feel the service is worth. Uh, the, 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 the dollar amount they put on it now that. W- w- we all meant, the chiefs of the, the agencies represented here, uh, we're asking for a breakdown of all those costs. Where, where they got these numbers. Surely there's, there's data more than, than just the raw numbers. Um, the percentages is based on call volume. So how it's worked traditionally is they take all their dispatcher's salaries, add that up, and then they get a number of calls, call volume based on our usage. And then, uh, you know, they divide that up. We pay a percentage of their total dispatch salaries based on our usage, which is kinda the number we've been going by. Now they wanna calculate other costs, the cost not just of dispatchers, but of people in HR or finance department who support the dispatchers, the air conditioning in the building, the toilet paper, the, I don't know. You know, we, we asked for a list. I'm not sure if they're including the deputies that are doing security outside C-Tech, no idea. But all these costs that they want to, uh, pro- that say, support the whole, uh, C-Tech. So as you can see, that, that pretty much doubles what we're paying if they are gonna ask for that amount. So I just, uh, wanted to let you guys be aware of the, uh, the potential, uh, maximum in- increase we could see either next year or maybe over a period of several years. Uh, a point I had raised with them is I got able to find out, pretty much, wh- cause what they're saying is, is these other costs are being bore by the county. Uh, a point I had raised with them is I got able to find out, pretty much, wh- cause what they're saying is, is these other costs are being bore by the county. My argument is, we're also the county, and our, our citizens in this community pay almost four million dollars in county taxes. How much of that, you know, are we getting, are we getting a rebate on that? So, uh, they're, you know, they really didn't have an answer for that, but that, I think, yeah, they're, they're, they referred to all of our agencies as other jurisdictions, and I, I had to stop them, I was like, we're, we're Travis County as well, we're, we're jurisdictions within your jurisdiction, and we're paying for our own service, we're paying for our own dispatch, if we were unincorporated, not only would we not contribute to your C-Tech, but we'd be using deputies, taking them out, you know, I mean, we're providing our own police service, that's something you guys don't have to cover. We're still paying taxes, but we're not getting deputies to patrol, I mean, we're providing, we're taking care of our own city. So, um, but I mean, we're, you can see our numbers even, we're the, we're the smallest in there. But if you were to take Jonestown, Maynor, Mustang Ridge, Rollingwood, Sunset Valley, Westlake Hills, you know, you're looking at a total of over a million dollars they're gonna want, or they're saying we spend.
One point one three.
There you go. Mister, Mister Math. So with that money, if, if, if we were to, if we were to hypothetically pay that, you know, we should have our own dispatcher. So that's the other argument I have, is they're saying this is what it costs them, but it doesn't cost them, because yes, we're putting, we're putting more work on their dispatcher, but we're not getting an extra dispatcher, we're on the same channel as the county officers. When, when, when the sheriff's deputies are making a call, we hear it, we're on the same channel. So, we're, they're just doing a little extra work, they haven't actually staffed us with a dispatcher of our own. And at that price, you could do one twenty-four seven just for us. And, uh, we had, we had a, we had a lunch today for, uh, Christmas, thank you Amber. Um, and I mean, you can see where they're holding the channel, cause something's going on and we can't even get in. So, that's, you know, kind of long term, we gotta look at-
Explain that, holding the channel you can't get in.
So, what happens is if there's a, if somebody comes across an open door or something, they'll literally hold the channel where you can't transmit, like, cause you know, and it's not, it's not a concept I'm familiar with, in Corpus, where I came from, we hold the channel, cause there's shots being fired, or there's a car chase, you know, you don't want somebody else jumping in with minor traffic, cause that, that radio airspace is a lifeline for that officer that's involved in the critical situation. But their definition of what's critical here is, is very broad, and it's a daily occurrence where they're holding that channel, you know, and that's the channel we have, that's the one we're paying for. So, those are just some of the, the things that, you know, myself and, and some of the other chiefs had brought up. Uh, so we're gonna wait for those numbers, when I have them, I'll provide them to you, but really, at the end of the day, we're kind of at their mercy.
I'm really interested, this is a dangerous game they're playing, and I want you to send us the itemized information.
Absolutely, yes sir, we, we've requested that, and I'll send you whatever it is they provide for us.
It almost seems like if they come up with this, the option would be for this group to hire their own dispatcher.
Yeah, absolutely, one point one, we'll just throw in with these other five.
I'll be the dispatcher for one point one.
Well, the, the dispatching, it, it, it's all, it's all the technology that goes with it, so even if we could hire them.
And I want a rebate on our county taxes too.
Yeah.
I know why they're doing it, and it's a dangerous game they're playing, and I wanna see the itemized list.
Yes sir, we'll, we'll, we will get that to you as soon as I have it.
Pass the word.
Plenty of other, I, I promise you I will.
And, and of course, these other jurisdictions are in the same boat.
I just don't have any pull.
All right, thank you council, and thank you chief.
Yes sir.
Um, we have, uh, I have twenty-three, special impossible action on an agreement with, uh, Jordan Vanderhar to create a recruitment promotional video for the police department. Uh, Amber, and we may get some color from the chief on this as well.
Sure, uh, Jordan Vanderha- Har was, um, able to do some last minute video footage at the, um,
Police Department.
Uh, suggestion of the chief, yes, and he thought of it at the last minute, and was, it was great, so just a great opportunity to get some really good footage. Uh, what we're trying to do is create a promotional video that would talk about the department, basically why Rollingwood is such a great place to work, and why, um, officers, and, and maybe we could even kind of expand it a little bit to, um, you know, other employees, why they would wanna come here as well. But focusing on the officers, since that's what we're really lacking right now. And Jordan has, um, given us a, a proposal of two thousand dollars, and he's gonna work up a storyboard for us, and, um, line up some shoes, and, um, so we also reached out to Bowie, and they proposed, uh, a price tag of three to five, and we feel with, um, already having some footage from Jordan, um, that this Jordan would be the recommended editing we use for this video.
He said it was two thousand dollars?
Right.
Do you know Hollywood, they always go over budget.
Um, I think a recruitment, uh, and promotional video for the city is a good idea, um, and we're trying to attract officers, it's something that we've been struggling with for a long time, and I really like, um, the idea, I think we got a chance to meet him at the police navidad, um, and, uh, with that, I will move, uh, to, um, negotiate an agreement with, or allow the city administrator to execute an agreement with Jordan Vanderhar to create a recruitment promotional video for the police department.
I second. Motion and a second, discussion council?
Do we need a dollar limit?
Oh, in the amount not to exceed two thousand dollars, thank you.
You good with that? Buck?
Yes, a second.
Um, motion, second, additional discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you chief.
Thank you.
And tell you what, while we've got you there, just to make sure I can free you up for the night, call thirty-one, discussion possible action on ordinance amending the city of Rollingwood's Code of Ordinances, chapter four, animals, article three, animal care and control, division one, generally, section four dash nine zero, public nuisances, providing a savings clause, providing severability clause, and providing effective date.
This ordinance was a suggestion of Chief Brady's in enforcing, um, dog waste at the park. Um, it, the current ordinance, the way it read, it, it was, um, illegal for dogs to defecate on another person's property, but not necessarily on public property, and so the chief asked if we could change this to put some more teeth in the ordinance, to make it enforceable should they encounter.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it, uh, the, we did, we really didn't have a, a mechanism to, to enforce, um, to enforce that, this would give us some, uh, ability to do that.
We have approval of the recommended changes.
We're motion, second, council?
Second.
Motion and second, discussion?
Uh, only that I'm a little confused, because I was told in an email that this never happens. I do have six pictures from football practice two weeks ago that we tend to agree with the chief, but, um, leave it at that.
Well, um, if it does ever happen, uh, at least now, uh, our police department-
Certainly prospectively, is what I think.
It, yes, the, the, the police department could enforce, uh, a rule, uh, on public property, uh, akin to what they would on private property. Uh, motion and a second, uh, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you for bringing it to our attention, chief.
Yes sir.
Go get them, go out there, maybe, uh, put on your, uh, on your webbing there, uh, poop bags.
Do we have to post any notice of that in the park in order to find, or is it just as long as it's a city ordinance?
I, I think we're sign happy.
Right, we are, I'm just wondering if there's like, I know, like, to enforce some things on the streets, you have to post.
No, there's, there are some specific regulations with respect to, um, the statutes require a certain notice, but not this.
Not on this, okay.
All right, thanks for that, council and chief, um, appreciate you joining us, but you were, we got you on Ivan's side.
Sure.
Catch up on some of the trail learns, probably.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
There's, there's no trail.
Uh, discussion of possible action, I have twenty-four on the selection of a wastewater rate consultant. Council, we heard from, uh, two very qualified, uh, folks, uh, this evening, or outfits this evening, and, um, we've largely had the opportunity to, uh, uh, hear and review the same from Utility Commission. Uh, can I ask, Sarah, did the utility commission have a recommendation after the presentations?
They did, so both of the same, they provide different people for Wildon, but, um, both companies provided, uh, their presentation, and the utility commission recommended, um, Melissa Headen be hired.
I felt the same, um, right.
Certainly from a bottom line, uh, standpoint, um-
Uh, it's a likely vote, I'm good with it, yeah.
Okay, uh, well, you can vote if you have a motion, so-
Oh, yeah, uh, I don't even know who it is, will you vote him for it?
Oh, that's, you wanna make the motion, Sarah, since it's utility commission?
I, I can do that, so I move, um, that we impor- or engage, um, Melissa Headen Consulting to perform our wastewater, um, cost of service and rate design study.
I second. Move a motion and a second, discussion council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all good, thank you. Uh, discussion of possible action on a proposal from Wildon Financial Services submitted in responsive cities RFP for a consultant to perform building fee study.
We received only one response, um, I would ask that the council postpone action on this. We had a really interesting interview with, uh, prospective director of public works who has experience, um, as a building official, and he's done, uh, fee studies, um, like these before, and so there might be an opportunity, um, if, if everything works out there. And I did check, um, our revenues are exceeding our expenditures in the building, uh, department, so I think we'd be okay to wait and make sure.
I suspect they need to be adjusted more than just raised.
And, and as I, e- exactly, and as we're kind of watching this, um, where is everything Corey did was on, you know, we were, we were footing the bill for the city was, within the permit fee, now it's just Carrie's just her flat salary, and anything consultant wise is, you know, i- if it's above and beyond, it's passed on. And so, uh, we're, we're able to keep better track, and it seems like we've got even a better handle than what we thought we were going to have.
So we're not upside down at this point?
We're not upside down.
But with the new house bill that passed, we can, kind of like what Travis County was trying to do to us, but we can charge for lights on, um, overhead, um, insurance, HR, all of the, the cost of the operation behind, um, where there's overhead, not just the, the service itself.
We can have a closer look at how to restructure that, and to, to Amber's point, one of our, uh, one of our candidates for, uh, uh, public works director, has experience, uh, doing exactly, uh, that kind of analysis.
In that interview, I think you agree.
It kinda sounds like we could break this down on our end honestly, if we don't have the power to do that.
Yeah.
Right.
That was my thought, I guess, I'd volunteer my time, they'll, they'll figure that out.
Well, and I think, I think this council, uh, and our city staff have done a great job of taking ownership of a lot of, um, uh, a lot of aspects that were kind of outside the, previously, outside the purview, uh, of our city, and, and may, and may not have, have kind of freight on the edge, just, uh, so, we're getting a little tighter, uh, in, in the way we're, uh, able to account for our services as well as our expenses. Um, and I would see this as a continuation of it.
We need to start budgeting for like, the upgrading the truck, and like, putting money away.
Yeah, but to the mayor's point, if you pay closer attention, you should be able to live within a reasonable inflationary increase year to year. So, being good stewards of the dollars and looking closely as you're recommending, should be able to take care of it.
That's right, I, I, I would agree with that, I think, I think there is, I firmly believe that improved efficiencies on our side, uh, we can stretch existing dollars further.
So, are we, are we postponing this?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Need some reserve for the future.
Postponing or killing?
Upgrades and hardware.
I think-
I think she recommended postponing.
Postponing.
Home, just in case, so that needs to be kind of budgeted into the cost of that, if it goes into that, if things don't pan out.
You don't have to take, you actually don't have to take any action, you can just move on to the next agenda.
Oh, any of those things that don't pan out, we can do that.
Right, hopefully. But we're, we can do it.
Twelve thousand, we should.
Yeah.
It could, it could come back for consideration if we don't have an alternative.
And I agree, it would be a simple exercise. If we were looking at large increases, I would be leery of staff performing the exercises, and then, and then proposing li- a large increase, but it doesn't look like it's probably going to-
We can't even use historical data, we just changed our whole process.
Right.
That's right.
So we're gonna pay for a study to use historical data, and we changed the whole process, and we really need to wait till next year to do that.
Yeah.
It's a really important-
I would be fine if, if you elected to kill.
You can just pass on this, you don't have to make a motion, you don't have to do anything, and just move on to the next agenda item.
You wanna talk about it a little more, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm just hearing you guys moving further and further away from it.
From the, from, from, from this government item.
But all, all motion to kill, agenda item number twenty-five.
Or you can do that.
But you moved to table it, definitely.
To table it.
Oof.
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
Move on, or take a vote, I don't care.
That's not a real motion, right, we're, that was banter, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay, twenty-six, discussion possible action regarding issuing an RFP for a financial advisor.
It's been several years, um, so our contract is currently with US Capital Advisors with, um, James and Jim Gilly, and so I would like to, um, issue an RFP to see about a new financial advisor, or the same, either way.
So just to remind everybody on council and anybody watching at home, uh, we adopted a policy of going out for RFPs, uh, for any, uh, third party vendors, uh, that have been, uh, kind of on our roster, so to speak, uh, for, um, did we say five years, or was it three years?
Correct, five.
Five years, thank you.
I move to issue an RP, uh, RFP for a financial advisor.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, discussion possible action on the creation of, uh, commercial corridor task force and designating members, bless you, of planning and zoning, uh, RCDC and city council to sit on said task force. Uh, so this is, um, uh, a conversation that was had at both RCDC and, uh, planning and zoning, uh, prior to coming here. Uh, the idea, again, being that we have, uh, a lot of data that we have paid good money for, um, let's have a, a group of folks take ownership of that, uh, thereby increasing the likelihood that we act on said data and expense, rather than, um, allow it to accumulate dust on a shelf.
Can I make an, a motion and then allow you to appoint the, um, task force members as a mayor?
So we can, uh, what I, uh, the way it was proposed to both RCDC and planning and zoning is that they, uh, they as bodies would provide, uh, their preferred, uh, candidates, uh, planning and zoning has put forward, uh, we suggested two members of planning and zoning, two members of RCDC, uh, one or two members, uh, of the city council, uh, and then in truth, it was suggested, and I think it's a brilliant idea, uh, that we find one or two, uh, citizens, um, that are in these kinds of spaces that really understand the mechanisms here, uh, to also kind of weigh in, um, so.
Does it help you to, to be able to appoint them just based on those recommendations if I made that motion, and then you have to go back?
It does, if you guys had the, you know, if you have faith in your boards and commissions and, and may to make sure that we're putting together, uh, a solid task force, then, then, then absolutely.
Okay.
So, um, I would make a motion to create a commercial corridor task force, and designate members of the planning and zoning commission, RCDC, and city council to sit on the task force as appointed by the city of Rollingwood mayor.
I second the motion.
Do we need to add commu- have citizens, can we make you?
And citizens, I would like to amend my motion to add citizens.
I'm good with that.
Two citizens is, did you say?
Um, whatever you recommend, I think at least, at least one, uh, just-
Okay, I'll just say citizens.
I, I was gonna say, we'd, in my experience, you know, you get too many people on a panel. I was gonna say, we, in my experience, you know, y- you get too many people on a panel, it comes cumbersome, you don't get everybody there to meet, and, uh, rarely do such bodies see eye to eye. Uh, so it's, it's a nice, nice balancing act, but I know we have some folks that are in our community.
Biggest problem would be getting two people to agree to do it.
Fair enough, that, that might be, it'd be a challenge, I tell you, uh, there was a lot of hands that went up on PZ, so that was, uh, really exciting to see. Um, I know, uh, I know there's, uh, there, there are a number of folks on RCDC that would be happy to do it. Um, I'll wait to see, uh, whose hand on this dais goes up, uh, but, uh, I think, I think we, this is, I think the community understands the importance of this, so, uh, I hope so anyway, and if not, we will continue to blast the importance of this until they do get it. Um, we have a motion in a second, uh, discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, council, uh, twenty-eight, discussion possible action on ordinance to amend the park rules.
Since we didn't get the proposed changes until the middle of this afternoon, which.
Stable it?
Yes.
I thought that's been our policy, and we didn't think that they, we don't address it.
Without time to, to review, so, uh.
I'm voting against him anyway.
So we have, uh,
Vote if you want.
Uh, we don't have a motion, but we do have a suggestion to postpone, uh, so that, uh, uh, folks have, uh, a greater period of time to review the proposed.
Um, I would agree with that, and I, I'd, I would just say, um, um, the park commission liaisons, so I can say this at the next meeting, but, um, one of the uh, issues I see here is, um, children under ten have to be accompanied by an adult in the park that's intended for the children to be able to.
This, this is for the off-leash area.
In fields three, four, and five, you have to have an adult with you to go kick the ball in the field, because there's off-leash animals there, so I have a problem with, with that.
Sure. Well, so.
I'm not ever voting for anything related to a park that says bring children at your own risk. Just going on record, I'm not doing it. I think park commission needs to spend a little more time on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
At the end of the day.
So, uh, then I, I'll take it, we'll postpone the item, uh, and then if I could, uh.
I feel like this is different than what the park commission approved, so, I, I don't understand how, like, this isn't what I thought they voted on and approved, and a different version came to us later? Is that right? So, what happened is they all looked at the rules from the city of New Braunfels,
Mm-hmm.
and then, I believe Catherine Horn emailed us later after the meeting, they said, yeah, those are the rules we wanna approve, and then Catherine Horn emailed those, and so, um.
But these are different than those rules, because it, it didn't, the way that they had it.
We didn't see what they considered, you know, at, at the park commission, and then just relied on Catherine Horn to send us the, the follow-up.
Yeah. I think just procedurally from, um, that, I'd like to see the rules in the park commission agenda packet, and then to make, like, a little bit easier to understand what they've actually.
Right, those were actually the city of New Braunfels rules that they wanted.
And this is a different document.
These are the city of New Braunfels rules.
The ones that were in the packet.
Word for word, I just looked them up on the, yeah.
Really?
So this is.
So do we have plagiarizing concerns?
This is a different, so this is word for word, city of New Braunfels.
Yes.
This is not a different document, okay.
With the exception of taking out a reference to a, a chapter in their code.
And I know they don't, they didn't like calling the people humans, so they wanted to call them something else.
So, everything I'm hearing, for the sake,
Sorry.
For, for the, for the sake of the hour, uh, can I suggest that we postpone this?
Sure.
Uh, and our park liaisons, uh, have a greater level of discussion, uh, with our park commission on what their intent is for these?
Sounds like plan.
Perfect. Thanks, council. Um, twenty-nine, discussion possible action on ordinance amending the city of Rollingwood's Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Land Development Code, Chapter one oh one, Buildings and Construction. Um, I don't have to read all of this, we've established that, right?
That's correct.
That's great, so, we're on twenty-nine, fellas, sorry, fellas at home, pull it up on the website.
All this does is strike the word federal and uses the word, and then inserts the word city holidays. It's consistent with another section of our code, and we want to, um, staff wants to be here if there's construction going on, so we can monitor concerns and address concerns, and so, um, it doesn't make sense that we would allow co- because some city, y'all do give us a couple extra.
Doesn't line up.
Holidays, yes, it doesn't line up. This is just making sure that the building people follow the same schedule as our staff, so that we're here to enforce.
That's great.
Correct.
I would move to amend the city's Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Land Development Code, Chapter one oh one, Buildings and Construction, Article Five, Manner of Conducting Construction, Restricted, Section one oh one dash two four seven, con- conduct of construction restricted, providing a savings clause, providing a severe, severe ability clause, and providing an effective date to change the word federal to city.
Oh, I second that, sorry.
I'm like, did I read the wrong agenda?
We have a motion in a second, discussion, council? What's that? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item thirty. You can read what it is.
Again, cleaning up the code, um, adds at least one and no more than two council members who can be elected to, um, as a, a, as a liaison, and it clarifies, um, the liaison positions. Um, I think we had park and planning, and now it just says park commission, so, this is cleaning it up.
Oh, sorry, you wanna do it?
I'll go for it.
I'm with adoption of the recommended changes.
Oh, I'm sorting that, nice.
Like, we don't need to read the whole thing, just do it.
We're gonna, we're gonna work on the agenda language for yous, yous.
We have a motion in a second, do we have discussion, council? All in favor?
Once, once.
Sorry.
Aye.
We do this, then we need to reassign our liaisons?
Liaisons? I don't think so.
Or do we need to?
No, no.
We don't have anybody assigned to the board of adjustment, doing?
It's the mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, for the record, uh, department, mayor and department reports are available, uh, to the public, uh, should you need, uh, items thirty-two through forty-three, uh, adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
We're out.
So moved.
Second.
Good deal. Thank you, council.
Leslie said yes.
You miss our old council meetings, don't you, where we'd be here until two?